All right, I think, I think we got six o'clock, right? Yep, six o'clock it is. All right, here we go. So this is City Council Work Session for December 7, 2020. There is means to join by Zoom or listen in by calling. If you'd like to see that, please go to the agenda on the city's website. So this meeting is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor Yornell Holloman. Counselor Martinez Plan Carte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Counselor Cofield is absent tonight and District 5 seat is vacant, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, folks, anything on the council agenda and meeting this evening? Oh, all right.
Yes, I have one. I have one. I'm not sure we ever really got a consensus from the council about the system development charge for the transportation fees.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I wanted, I was hoping to bring that up as well.
Okay.
On a, on a more, sort of a deeper dive into SDCs. So let's do, let's talk about that later on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Any council business items? No? Okay. All right, let's roll then. I think that Matt, that's, uh, that is your cue, performance-based budgeting. The drumroll.
We, uh, lost our sound technician tonight, so there is no drumroll. But it is, uh, my pleasure to talk with you guys tonight about priority-based budgeting and biennial budgeting. We've been working on this for six months now and culmination of a lot of training and we're in the throes of it, but we wanted to share this vision with the council and appreciate Dan's exposure to this and bringing this to Newburgh and I'm excited to see where this goes. So we'll jump in and talk an overview, overview of both these topics. So next slide, please, Sue. Wanted to kick it off by essentially focusing on highlighting what's, this body is identified as the top priorities for 2020. And tonight's conversation really kind of centers around state's financial plan, you know, the annual budget and how it reflects the council goals as well as any other services that the city provides. You know, I know these are, uh, what, uh, you know, three or four weeks away from maybe becoming 2021 goals or a new goal-setting session. But wanted to at least illustrate that we're beginning to, you know, think about how we connect our budget to the, to the council goals and in the future strategic plan. Not that we haven't done that in the past, but this effort again continues to, to focus on what you guys, as a body, deem as most important for the city. So, uh, next slide, please, Sue. So the role of the budget, uh, you know, I just thought I'd go over that. Basically, it's financial plan that, that should link to the strategic plan or council goals in this case. It's really the, the tool that achieves all the goals, but it's specifically, I've got a couple, a couple of the council goals that you saw on the previous slide, which pertained to customer service and inclusion. In particular, our budget is meant, we want to make sure that it reaches each of the stakeholders, each of our audience members in our community, whether they are financially astute or not, and make it something that, you know, the average citizen can, can pick up and read and understand where the city is going and what, what services really we deliver for them. And, um, basically, you know, the second bullet point is, you know, thinking about, uh, Counselor Bacon, you know, he's been here, uh, as long as I've been here, uh, as long as I've been here. But through the last six years, you know, we've really made an effort to make the budget transparent. And, but by, by design, Oregon Budget Law does a really great job of, of structuring a budget. But it is, it still remains sort of the black box and, and it's hard to communicate to the average citizen. So, uh, you know, we'll, you'll hear, uh, comments about the Budget Committee and that process about, you know, hey, it takes, you know, three or four meetings to get into it. We are sort of grasping that what we're delivering here and, uh, you know, Budget Committees don't want a rubber stamp, they want to understand the budget. And so this is an effort towards making that process even more transparent. So, uh, next slide, please, Sue. So in kicking this off, uh, you know, some of the questions that, uh, that I felt would help you understand, engage you into what we're doing is just to create the challenge. You know, what services does the city of Newburgh deliver that mean the most to you as counselors, to your neighbors, you know, or to the public? And that might be easy to put into a, you know, a five-goal, you know, type of format. But there's certainly a lot more beneath that that the city offers. And, you know, different parts of the community are going to, you know, really find one priority to be really important, where others are going to say, no, this is important to me. And so, well, the city might deliver all those, going to the budget document can create a challenge to understand how those are being met. So another question is, you know, how do, how do you know, uh, that the, how the success is measured? And, uh, you know, we have talked about how we, you know, present our budget and what metrics we are measuring our, our success against. And currently, you know, uh, our budget document, uh, doesn't deliver a lot of those metrics. And so we're talking about, you know, how does, how does a citizen know, you know, whether or not we've reached our target? I will say that like one of our primary targets in a budget committee in a financial level is, hey, how much ending fund balance do we have? You know, at the end of any given year, do we have a target? Well, that's just one of the, uh, you know, one of the factors of, um, you know, success. But it's certainly not the only one and not unique to any particular program. So the third bullet, bullet point really talks about, asks the question, do you know, do you know how to prioritize the city's resources against the services it delivers? And so there ought to be a, you know, strategic, uh, process of doing that. So, uh, next slide, please, Sue. Uh, in listening to, you know, the council conversations over the last few months, uh, maybe even the last year, I wanted to throw out a couple of examples of how, uh, what we're talking about here. Affordable housing is an example, you know, of a, of a topic we talk about a lot. And we've had some conversations in the last, you know, couple of council meetings with, you know, the, the construction excise tax and, uh, those sorts of things. Affordable housing actually, uh, encompasses a lot of different product processes. And, um, what I put, uh, here illustrates that affordable housing encompasses staff time. And so committee time, the Affordable Housing Commission, professional services that Doug brings in folks to, to assist with, and then grants, you know, the affordable housing, uh, grants, you know, Fund 14, the Economic Development Fund, uh, uses grants. But if you had to look at the budget today and go, well, how much does the city putting towards affordable housing as a whole? Would you be able to answer that question? And, and you don't have to answer that now, but I would challenge you with that question. And let's move on to the next slide with the, a second example. Traffic management, you know, another, uh, commonly talked about topic in the community. Uh, if you think about traffic management, you think about enforcement. You've got the, you know, our police force is, you know, out, uh, making sure that speeds are, are met. And, uh, people are, you know, being safe, cell phones, you know, signals, that sort of thing. You've got the traffic management engineering, Karen and her, and her team, you know, talk about, uh, you know, that's, different roads, et cetera. How did the engineering, how, why do we make the, the roads, et cetera? You have grants, uh, you have traffic management education. On the backside, the, the less desirable side is you visit, uh, the court if you, uh, have a, you know, traffic infraction. And then you have traffic school as a way of, uh, mitigating future violations. And so all of those together, I would say, you know, pertain to traffic management. But we're, they're all in different pieces of the, the budget. And so it's very difficult to find that cost in the entire budget. So, you know, when we communicate with the average citizen, how do, how much does the city, uh, put towards delivering a safe traffic environment? Newburgh, that question is very hard to answer. Next slide, please, Sue. The, the next, uh, this next slide here just gives a few more examples without actually breaking them down. But, uh, as you think about the council goals, you think most sustainability, that's a broad category. Diversity, equity, inclusion, that's also in the council goals. And that's going to be, uh, a multi-departmental, multi-fund, uh, operation or a, a target. That just the act of doing the budgeting cycle, uh, how much does the city put into doing the annual budget cycle? Cybersecurity, pretty hot topic. We want to stay out of the news and not have an issue there. But non-portable water, early literacy, uh, and the rest of those examples there on the slide are just all other examples that if you had to go to the budget document, would you be able to answer the question? How, how much is the city spending on that? And I, it could be a hypothetical question, but, uh, I asked this department, I asked the department heads this question as I was, uh, introducing this concept to them and gave them, you know, three, four minutes in the budget document to just find the answers and challenge them that the answers were probably going to be, no, I can't tell you that, you know, I can't tell you that. So, next slide, please. So the answer, as I just sort of alluded to, is the city's current budget document does not very easily answer these questions. Occasionally, you'll find a, a department, for example, the Patrol Department in Police, it's clearly defined that this is what it takes for us to do patrol. However, that is a department within a fund. And as this slide indicates, the city's budget document tracks expenses in funds, departments, divisions, and different types of revenue. But within the rows, all those rows in the, in the budget are different programs that are blended together that make it less clear as to what exactly the result is. So, um, one of the most, uh, probably easily identifiable, uh, occurrences in the budget is personnel service costs. Uh, personal services represents 50% of the total operating budget across the city. It's about, uh, out of a $35 to $40 million budget, it's at least half of that, you know, 17, 18, uh, million dollars. And if you look at personnel, you, you may see that it's, it's assigned to a particular department like finance. But again, that still doesn't tell me or you, how much time is being spent on the deliverables that, that we're doing? So, the answer, hopefully everybody got it right on there. There's not going to be a test afterwards, but the answer is no, current budget document does not answer those questions. So, next slide, please, Sue. So the solution is priority-based budgeting. And priority-based budgeting, uh, in a, a simple definition is a process of allocating budgetary resources through the lens of programs and services rather than expense categories. And so a couple of things I want to say about, you know, that definition in and of itself is, it's a process. It's a, uh, you know, a comprehensive process that involves a lot of staff in the, the organization to, to identify, uh, programs and priorities. There's a lot more detail that goes into the process of, uh, doing a budget under this framework. The second thing I, I want to mention is that this is a budget, allocating budgetary resources. Right now, what we're talking about here is the budget, in this case, the budget for the future fiscal year. It's an, it's not an accounting exercise and we're, we're thinking about how we can measure this on an ongoing basis. But priority-based budgeting is talking expressly about the budget that the council and the budget committee will, uh, be receiving in the future, that financial plan. And then, uh, programs and services, we'll talk about that here in a second. Uh, and hopefully, uh, those of you that have gone through budgeting, understand what the traditional expense categories are. I mentioned, you know, personnel services, material services, capital outlay, those are types of expenses, but not really, grouped in a program. So, next slide, please, Sue. So this slide, uh, there's a lot of detail, I'm not going to read, uh, everything on it, but it's a, uh, it's a really good, summary of, of this whole process. And I want to take a moment to, to just back up and say, how did we get to, uh, party-based budgeting? I mentioned Dan has done this in, uh, previous, uh, Row County. And, um, uh, there's others, Kesha has also had experience with, with party-based budgeting. Back when we started this process in the summertime, uh, I wanted you guys to know that there's some human element to this. Myself and an intern that the city brought on, uh, uh, through the emerging, look, emerging, excuse me, engaging local government leaders, uh, group. Uh, we have a student, a master's student that joined the staff, myself and Caleb, in, you know, researching how does one go about doing priority-based budgeting? And we came across a company called Resource X that actually is, uh, really the experts in walking municipalities through this process. And so what you're seeing to, on this slide here, you know, is they're, they're over, their framework of what the blue priority-based budgeting blueprint looks like. And Resource X is a company out of Colorado that, uh, has been doing this for 10 to 15 years. They've are doing this across the, all United States, they've got clients in, uh, many different states. And it, we found that Resource X really had the, the process and could teach us how to do this. So myself, Caleb and Mika, our intern, uh, spent two months in training with, uh, Resource X and sort of in a train-the-trainer mode where we learned how to take this information, this process, back to the departments and back to the city and implement it. And so, um, let me just break down some of this, this slide here. If you take today's, um, environment that we've been in, 2020, COVID provides a, a pretty stark, view of, of what's going on in the world, of course. And it really accentuates, uh, some of the shortcomings of our revenue, uh, some of the needs that people are having out there in the community. And really, again, brings us a kind of stark reality to limited resources that the governments have and how are we going to respond to that challenge? And are we needing to pivot away from maybe some of the things we're doing today to, uh, either some course, more core services or some new services that would respond to what the community is dealing with? So on the left of that slide, you, we're talking about, do we have any new needs? And today we've got, uh, you know, new needs in responding to COVID, for example. We may have no new needs, there may be a time when the city is in an environment where there's, you know, stability and we might not have, uh, any challenge, we might just be status quo for a bit. We, we maintain and we preserve our current services, uh, or we seek to lower rates and refund our taxpayers. Really, this program is designed around any scenario, any economic or financial scenario that the city might face. So this is not just a COVID, you know, knee-jerk reaction, but this is really meant for just a better way of approaching, you know, the government or the budgeting as, as a whole. So, uh, from there, from there, what the, the goal really is, is to, prioritize how we budget and can we free up resources, as you see in the middle circles of that slide, uh, or reallocate resources? And use that to meet new needs, whether that's a, you know, sourcing, can we go out and leverage our, our resources with other partners? There's a little bit of a explanation about the irreducible core, you know, what do we boil our, our services down to? Or can we gain some efficiencies through technology? You know, one of the clear examples of COVID is that we're, uh, working remotely. Uh, there's obviously some efficiencies and some challenges that come with that. But how do we respond to that? And, and how can we reallocate our budget, you know, to meet those efficiencies? And then just looking at service levels, and by that, we mean, um, you know, what can we, what are we delivering with our, uh, human resources, our, our staffing? And, uh, you know, can we utilize any volunteers, volunteers to augment the, the staffing that we have? So that top circle is talking about, you know, freeing up, allocating, reallocating current resources. Or there may be an opportunity or a need to generate new revenue. So, uh, in the last several years, you know, you've, the Budget Committee and the council's heard a, a lot about generating new, new revenue, whether it's a transportation utility fee or, uh, you know, public safety fee, et cetera. Fees and charges, uh, are better accepted, better discussed in the context of, um, what our, our delivery is. What is our service or our program that we're talking about? Uh, other new revenue that actually has been underutilized in the city, although recently we've had some good success with it, is grant funding. We've had some, some large grants like our, uh, seismic, uh, seismic grant on the Public Safety Building. You know, you heard today, you're going to hear tonight, I think, or the next month about some additional grants that Doug is bringing in. But grant funding represents new revenue that can help to deliver services in a better way or even some new services. And then, of course, the most controversial, uh, touchy topic is taxes and rates. Uh, you know, do we talk about, um, do we have an adequate level of taxes? Do we have, uh, you know, or do our rates meet our needs? And of course, the city of Newburgh has some robust discussions about that, uh, each budget cycle. So, again, just to summarize this, this slide, this really is sort of a, an overall framework as to how you can take this concept of priority-based budgeting and walk through any scenario, in any economics time, any financial time, and really use this to, you know, sharpen our budget process. Uh, next slide, please, Sue. So as we, as we're talking about party-based budgeting, you know, so what are the, the goals specifically that, that we want to bring to, uh, you know, Newburgh? Uh, you know, we want to successfully align the financial resources with the CSG to plan. Now, as the city moves forward, uh, a strategic plan will be, uh, you know, created to, to create sort of a, you know, systematic process by which a community can anticipate and make its plans for the future. It really moves beyond the council goals and it's really a, um, a target for, you know, moving forward with, with the city. And I know Dan is, uh, has had some, you know, a lot of effort in on that, uh, recently. So, um, really, again, it's, it's a clear, that second bullet point is a, a clear source of evaluating and competing priorities with limited resources. You know, without a, without a systematic, uh, vision for the future, a lot of internal dialogue around the budget can be, you know, shaped or colored by, you know, a short-term need that we have this year. We may have, oh, an opportunity to buy something, buy some property. And oh, it's a one-time-only type of thing, we got to act now. But how does that really fit in with the long-term need of the city? Sometimes it's, you know, politics can play, uh, can influence a, uh, you know, competing priorities. And of course, every year departments and, uh, represent their needs as the most important. And not having this, a clear system of evaluating those really can lead to some variation in the results of a budget. And I've seen that over the last six years that I've been here. But, um, and then one of our goals is really to communicate to our, our public in a clear, meaningful language, um, how we use our funds. Uh, like I said earlier, we've made some efforts to do that, but we really want to speak in a language that, that folks can latch on to. So if folks really want to know about safe traffic management, I want them to be able to find the information about how much does the city spend on traffic management? So, and I can see the, the conversations changing in a budget committee setting where we're not talking about, you know, pencils or pens or even, uh, you know, cars or those sorts of things. We're really having a robust conversation about the amount of resources going towards a particular goal. So, and then the last bullet point of just identifying new resources, uh, new source, needs and opportunities is again, another one of our goals that, you know, how can we be more creative, more, um, you know, expansive in our look for, um, you know, new revenue, free, free revenue grants, et cetera. So, next slide, please, Sue. So, the, the PBBI is Priority-Based Business Intelligence. And this slide really kind of gives a, an overview of, of the process flow from beginning to end. And from the, the ground up is really where we start. The PBBI prep, that orange, you know, layer is really where, where, uh, we have identified our, our goals, our communication plan. And, uh, you know, done the, the groundwork behind the scenes to, to get the city ready to do this. Program inventory is really a, uh, the identification of what are the services and, um, the deliverables that we, that we have for our city. And the city right now, over the last, uh, a month and a half, uh, each of the department heads and really, uh, maybe five, six, seven, 10 people in each department, each of the departments have taken the time to identify, what is it that we do? And what can we, how do we call that? What do we call that? You know, is, you know, is payroll a program? It's one of the things that finance does, it's important, it's mandatory, people like it. And so payroll is, is an example of a program that we've identified, uh, in, in the finance department. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. But the identification of those programs is, is, there's some work that's involved with that. Is it too high? Is it too low? Is it a task? Is it a department? It's really neither of those, it's finding a happy medium as to what a program is. And, and really coming to a finite list of, of programs. And, uh, then we move to the middle, the middle, uh, layer there, program cost allocation, probably in my mind, one of the more difficult, uh, pieces where, uh, we need to determine how much of our current budget is going towards a program. And let me be clear about something here, counsel. This priority-based budgeting is not a replacement of the existing budget process. It is an additional data layer on top of our existing process. We have to continue to meet Oregon Budget Law and prepare our budget in a, in a manner of using line-out items and expenses. But over the top of that, taking the same data and identifying program costs, is going to be more, lead to a more effective, uh, dialogue and discussion about how we use our resources. So what we're going to be doing then is taking, for example, our, our personnel services and saying, gee, how much of Matt's time goes towards budget, payroll, accounts payable, uh, audit? How much of Dan's time goes towards, you know, this program, that program? If we carve out 50% of our costs in that, uh, best estimate, then we can now begin to actually capture sort of a black box, uh, you know, 50% of our operating budget. Where does all that time go? Now we can capture it. So that's the third layer. The fourth layer, the program attributes, is really where we begin to see, you know, how do we evaluate the programs that we're, that we have identified? And in a second here, I'll, I'll go through, I'll, I'll, I realize there's a slide further down that talks about program attributes. And some of the characteristics of programs that we can use to help determine what we fund. And then that last bullet point, that last layer, program insights, is really, you know, the process of, as we're going through this, uh, this strategic process, what are we learning about ourselves? What are we learning about, um, our future, the future of programs? Are we seeing, um, opportunities? Are we seeing, uh, maybe realities that we didn't want to see, like the program is maybe potentially going out of, uh, out of style? Or, uh, are we finding that there's some challenges coming down the road, you know, with maybe new legislation? It's really an opportunity to say, what is the program, uh, facing in the future? And taking notes as we do so we can shape, you know, our future processes. So, I've probably got a little, a little deeper in this slide than I anticipated, but Sue, if you could roll the next slide. Thank you. Uh, this is just, uh, a definition of the program. It's really a group of people working together to deliver a service to users. And that's, so that obviously involves, you know, some staff time and then some resources like, um, you know, professional services and that, those sorts of things that, uh, we really use to deliver a service. And, um, so as we, as we go through this process, one of the things the city is going to want to be doing is, you know, coming up with some, um, you know, identifying the service trade-offs. We read, like, for, for example, I realized today we're spending a lot of time, you know, doing long-range financial planning, let's just say that as an example. Well, there's a trade-off of, of me spending my time doing that versus, uh, maybe producing a, um, a program that, uh, better serves our, uh, utility customers. We, we go through the priorities, identify, you know, hey, what are the trade-offs here? What am I doing today that I can't do because I'm, I'm spending my time elsewhere? Uh, as we've talked about, we deepen the understanding of our workforce usage, we actually stop and take the time to think about what we're doing. Not to the point of an attorney, let me put it this way, we're not Let me put it this way, we're not going to be measuring our time and spending, you know, say 20 for 20% of our time just tracking ourselves. But we're gonna be identifying, you know, what what we really, uh, spend the majority of our time doing. Um, we're gonna compare ourselves to other service providers. Uh, an example of that might be, you know, in 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 Newburgh. You know, we have multiple, uh, say governmental districts. Uh, we have the CPR, you know, CPRD provides, you know, park services and there's other, you know, entities, there's also private sector, uh, services that can be provided. You know, is it, are there folks in the community that are providing, uh, you know, say daycare that the city shouldn't be doing necessarily? Project Oasis is an example of partnering with, uh, service providers to deliver a service that maybe they can do better than we can. And then that last bullet point is just talking about performance and metrics. Um, as I mentioned, you know, as we go through this process, uh, you know, Dan has challenged me, the the first budget cycle he was here is, how are we gauging whether that we're successful in in providing our own payroll, for example? Could, you know, are we being effective? Should we be doing it faster, better, more remotely? Those sorts of things, metrics are things that we'll be coming up with as we progress that uh, will really, I think, sharpen the pencil and sharpen our our view on what we're doing. We might be measuring some things today in in an old fashioned way. You know, measuring a service against, uh, like taking the population of the city and dividing it by, uh, you know, financial number may or may not produce the right metric. So maybe maybe new metrics and new ways of measuring our our activity will will come out of this. So. Next slide, please, Sue. I kind of not to spend much time on the cost allocation, but this is really where we utilize the personnel line items. You know, and deciding to to programs, not just types of expenses. Uh, next slide, Sue. Attributes, this was that third layer, and let me just, uh, there's a bullet here that talks kind of the attributes that we would use to evaluate a program. Uh, as you think about a program, one of the things you're gonna think about is cost recovery. How much, how much do we receive back uh, for that service? Are we, you know, recovering 100% of our cost in delivering that service? An example might be, uh, you know, Doug and and his planning staff delivers, uh, planning services to other cities. How much of that do we get back? Are they paying the full load? Are we subsidizing them? You know, we need to evaluate how much of the cost recovery are we actually achieving? And there may be policies around that. Do we want to achieve a full cost recovery? Another, uh, another program attributes demand, you know, is the demand increasing, is it decreasing? Uh, you know, is demand for, uh, water going up, down is is the demand for business assistance going up or down in the COVID times? You know, what are the demand for our services? Reliance is, are we the only people that, uh, can can produce that, uh, program? Or there there are other folks that can actually do it, you know, do it better. The population served really evaluates, gets to that topic of, um, you know, how much of our city is being influenced by or affected by a program? Uh, you think about a, you know, say a police department and generally they serve the whole population, even though not everybody engages in a police service and everybody makes that phone call to to a service or a fire department. But how much of the population really is served or is it just a niche? And then the final thing is what, uh, you'll hear popular, um, you know, the unfunded, the unfunded mandate. How much of this do we have to do by virtue of being a government? Or by virtue of, you know, maybe the the state government saying you've got to do this versus voluntary, you know, things that we have choices to as to how we spend our money. So really, those are sort of the that's sort of the matrix that we will use to, um, describe the attributes of a program. And then the the next slide, Sue. Is that final layer of insights where we really just engage all the users to you know, provide a vision for action. And that's really where it's an opportunity just for free form thinking and just, you know, identifying, hey, what can we, what can we do to improve a program? So. Next slide, please, Sue. We're almost there, folks. I know it's dry topic. I'm excited about it, though. Party based budgeting tools, I mentioned that Resource X is a is the company that we've really leaned into to help us with this, this, uh, this engagement. And Resource X provides both consulting and support. Uh, they've had a tremendous, uh, influence and help to us. Uh, we went through a cohort model where we actually, uh, due to COVID and the restrictions on travel, Resource X has pivoted so that they're not necessarily just going out and be on site for a year or being, you know, multiple visits with an entity for a year. They actually said, hey, let's get four cities together in one cohort like at, you know, like your master's program might have a group of people working together. And it gave me the opportunity to talk to the cities in, uh, Michigan and Ohio. And I've talked with, you know, City of Salem and other other cities that said, hey, we're all doing this together. Let's let's learn from each other and and sharpen each other as we go through this and collaborate. Uh, that model has worked well and we've enjoyed that. And there's some real, um, advantages to do it that way. Uh, Resource X actually has software as well that we've, uh, purchased or there's an annual subscription to. You know, and so we actually have the tool to take, you know, existing budget data and put it into the programs and use the, uh, the software to communicate to you and to the public what programs we're we're using, you know, what allocate, what resources we're going to allocate and really shape it in an entirely different way. It's helpful to have that additional software so that we can communicate programs in addition to the regulatory requirements that we have to design our budget according to Oregon budget law. So, um, and of course, a third bullet point, I mentioned that we've, uh, had the joy of, you know, communicating with other cities across uh, the state and actually or across the nation, and we actually continue to do that, uh, through, uh, Slack, and so we can easily, uh, reach out to other people. So those are some of the tools that we're using and that I'll just pause here for a moment. And, um, that that sort of covers the priority based budgeting aspect of the the presentation. And, um, there's a couple more slides that we'll get into. But, um, really, I I thought I'd stop there and just say that's, that's the full meal deal for what we're doing. I probably missed a few things and I've asked Dan and Caleb to chime in with any additional questions or comments, but I guess I would turn it back to you, Mayor, and say, this is a piece, probably a good point in time to pause and answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Question? And I'm not, let me see if I can see what we're. So again, you know, if you have any questions, raise your hand. I'll I'll keep an eye on that. Um, and I'll lead off then, uh, Matt. So, um, you say that the resource X, we've already incurred that cost and we've got an annual subscription. What do you think it's going to take of staff time wise and and I guess a ballpark of cost to try to get this additional layer of information?
That's a great question. Um, you know, the amount of time we've spent on it thus far has been you know, it's been maybe 20% of my time, uh, you know, Caleb and others. I think honestly, though, um, as I talk with the other departments, I'm really encouraging them to that, hey, this is, this might feel like an initial lift and a and a new, a new way of looking at things, but it's gonna take some time to absorb that. But it's really, uh, you you're working with these programs already, you already know what you're doing. And as we go through the budget process in January, they're gonna be working with the same set of data that, uh, they're already producing for the budget. So, uh, I would say probably, you know, to give you an idea of the amount of time that has been spent, uh, you know, thus far, I've met with each of the departments, they probably put in, um, you know, maybe 10 hours apiece, you know, per department to identify these programs. And then really, we're trying to dovetail the rest of this into the future into the normal br- budget process. So.
And that, thank you. And then to to sort of to follow on, I guess, so, I mean, will it be drill? Will it drill down to the level of every employee will be assigned to a program or programs? Is that the way it'll be rolled out?
Yeah, yeah, right now, uh, in the traditional budget module, you know, what the council and the budget committee sees in is personal costs, you know, as a like, you know, wages and benefits. With the priority based budget mo- model, you know, and behind the scenes, I already allocate, you know, and each employee's time to a department and a fund. But we will be identifying on a per on a per employee level, which programs they're putting time into. And so you may not see that at the high level, but the data will be underneath there that we could drill down and say, you know, who's doing what, when? And again, keep in mind, that's not, that may not translate into actual, it's gonna be our best estimate for a budget plan. We would presume that it would, and that's the direction we're going. So in a sense, we do that every year anyways, uh, with with the assignment of time. You know, as an example, you know, the public works director puts time amongst streets, water, sewer and storm. That's the way we divide a day. We're just gonna take and divide it differently amongst programs. So to summarize the answer, uh, Mayor, yes, we will actually will have data, you know, down to the employee level as to which program they're putting their time into.
Thank you. All right, other questions, folks? All right, you know, Matt, I'm with you. Dry subject, but I think it's super cool, actually. Um, I think it'll be great data once we have it. So let me ask you a question. Does Oregon City use priority based budgeting at the moment?
They don't.
Oh, well, they they might want to think about that. Whoever is over there at Oregon City might be listening in, so they ought to think about that.
I'll talk with them about it.
Yeah, right, right.
You, you know, um, to to the point there about the, you know, the the dry topic, you know, I want to make sure that in talking with you guys tonight, really wanted to, I don't know, get get buy in and excitement because hopefully this is not just a data tool. It really is a communication tool that you that you as a council can use in talking with your, um, you know, constituents, the community members and anybody across the the board as to really where do the cities' financial resources, you know, go? And tying it down to a a common language that can really um, engage the citizens, engage our stakeholders, even our businesses. So I guess I, you know, I I jokingly say it's it's a dry topic, but really, honestly, it's I'm hoping that the end result is really beneficial to to you as a council and to many other people. So.
Thank you. And if, you know, if you want to know the story, follow the numbers. So, all right, Stephanie has a question.
It's not so much a question as just a statement. And I was gonna say, um, I really like this. So, uh, being someone that came in and had to learn this and my brain doesn't really think, um, this way. It took a long time. And even though I feel like I have gotten a good handle and Matt, you've been really helpful. And so was Caleb in teaching me and I got, I have a handle on it. My problem then is translating it to when people ask me questions about it and I don't necessarily have that language. Um, even if I understand it in my head and I, this feels like I will have some concrete language to use when I talk to people about the budget, um, in a way that communicates sort of what it really looks like and how things are going, um, which is what everyone asks when they ask about the budget. So I think this looks great and I'm excited about this.
Great. Um, thank you.
Matt, and then one other question, I mean, is this, I mean, how agile can this be? I'd imagine it can be pretty agile. All you have to do is change the percentages allocated by staff member. And what, so it can follow council goals if they change or any other priority?
That's right. Okay, that's right. Yeah, I mean, the the cool thing is that, you know, I'm I'm programs can change every year. We have, we'll have the software, you know, moving forward and, um, it is meant to be dynamic. As as I've prepared to go into this, uh, I'm thinking about, you know, trying to be efficient in how we gather the information as well. I do really think that once we get all the information in the software, it'll kind of be like a, um, you know, we have a lot of levers and we can, we can pivot and and shape each year as, um, as such a strategic plan or council goals. You know, changes, so.
Awesome. Any, uh, other questions for or comments for for Matt?
Just a comment from the peanut gallery, if that's all right. Um, you know, just wanted to emphasize actually underscore what Stephanie said that, um, you know, really having, you know, the ability to translate what we do to everybody is one step. And, you know, I think in the layers of the P V B I, you know, you've got the opportunity as well to engage people. So, you know, if you look at our agenda today, you've got two items that really speak to this, you know, the the presentation today and the work session. And then later on, when we have a communications assessment, you know, really being able to to find people and put information in front of them is one thing that we'll talk about in a little bit. But, you know, the having the information and knowing and engaging them and really understanding what their priorities are um, and be able to reflect that in our our financials. You know, it starts to tie together the idea of strategic planning, budgeting and communication in a way that everyone can participate. And I really think that underscores that inclusion goal of the council. And, you know, hopefully, just overall good management for all of us. You know, we're engaging folks who are consumers of our services and the development of the service and then the outcome. And they get to tell us if we're doing it well, if we're not doing it as well as they like and and will improve as we go by just having these things blended together.
Very good. Um, all right, anything else? Any other questions or comments, folks? All right, and I think you got something a little more on budget cycle.
Yep, yep, just two, just two more slides, um, just to round out, uh, the evening and maybe use up 13 more minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Biennial budgeting, I mean, let's, let's not just, you know, let's swing for the fences while we're doing budgeting and let's, you know, let's, let's really make this, uh, an effective process. Um, you know, biennial budgeting, what does that even mean? Um, two year budgeting really is, uh, it's allowed by Oregon budget law. Uh, you can either do an annual budget or or a biennial budget, can't go three years out. Uh, you know, but there are, I would say probably the, you know, the higher end, you know, the more sophisticated cities are actually doing biennial budgeting. Um, it's an option, but, uh, we're, we're moving towards that. And I wanted to highlight a couple of the benefits. First of all, we're already mobilizing every year to to your, your point, Mayor, about, you know, how much time does this take to do all this? Well, you know, by by budgeting is one of my programs that I put a lot of time into. We we mobilize every year between January and June and spend a boatload of time doing our budgeting. Why not do that for two years while you're already mobilized? And you come up with a good, you know, a, an estimate of what the expenses you're gonna need in the second year and the revenue. A lot of that can be predicted and mobilize once over two years rather than every year. That second year allows you to have more time actually executing the plan. Mid midterm adjustments can still be made. You know, we're in a about 20 minutes, I'm gonna be presenting you with a supplemental budget. Those are still, uh, tools that we can make. And of course, you know, mid year, uh, we will be able to reassess and do a maybe a less, uh, onerous process of, you know, sharpening the budget for the next year. We all know that, you know, beyond two years, uh, things just are are hazy. But, uh, we generally have a pretty decent idea of what, you know, that second year might be. But that midterm adjustment allows us to sharpen it even further. And then, you know, this, the other, the other only real impact that I am aware of on a biennial budgeting transition is that the budget committee terms are currently three years and they're staggered. And, uh, they would go from a three year to a four year stagger term because the the budget committee would be getting together every two years. So allowing one person to serve a four year term, give them a two, two budget cycle process. So, um, the, you know, biennial budgeting is, in my mind, a pretty nice, low hanging fruit. And it can also stabilize, you know, that second year. You know, and lend more towards long term, long range stability. So, um, that my final slide uh, is really kind of around the timeline. I know there's a, there's several of you that haven't actually sat. I know there's a, there's several of you that haven't actually sat through the budget committee. Can you say my budget committees have you sat through? You don't have enough hands?
Twelve.
Okay, that's like Sid.
I'm like, I need all the, I need all the fingers.
Yeah, yeah, I saw you flashing gang signs, I was like, oh. But here's the timeline, okay? Every year, in two more, in another year, you know, Jules and Bryce and and then District Five, they're not going to have sat through a budget cycle. Here's what it looks like. Summer twenty twenty is when we began doing the resource, resource X alignment and really just getting geared up for the party based budgeting. And then fall of twenty twenty, around now, we've been identifying the program inventory. And then in December here, we're really going to be working on completing that list of the programs and then beginning the attribute phases I talked about. And then January through June is the traditional budget cycle. And I know I'm leaving, but Dan guarantees that twenty twenty one will be better than twenty twenty. You can't, you gotta go up from here. And we'll begin the the biannual budget process as well. It's going to be odd to say an FY twenty one through FY twenty three budget, but April is when we get together as a as a team and release the proposed budget and begin the budget committee review process. Generally, those are, you know, three to four or five meetings, depending on the the year. Don't know how to go with a biannual budget, but that's the point at which you will really begin to have some different dialogue around the budget review process. So and then, of course, in June, we still have our our legal obligation to adopt a a budget by June thirty. So this is sort of the timeline as as to where we've been and where we think the that we will be going, so. That, Mayor, Council completes my presentation. Thank you for listening in. If you have any other questions, I'll entertain those as well, so.
Questions, anybody? Stephanie, do you have a question or is that a lingering hand? All right. The the only, I guess, it's not, it's not a question so much, maybe it is. It's it's the comment, you know, as it currently stands, we have the budget budget committee convene every year. And through that, we get citizen input. If we go to a two year thing, how do we ensure that we are still getting an adequate amount of community input? You know, for instance, tonight, we've got a supplemental budget and the budget committee won't ever see that. So that's, that would be my only caution on a two year budget is to make sure that we've got enough community input.
Noted, a great point. Yeah.
Stephanie.
I was going to say that too. I actually really like the idea of a two year cycle. And I know I've said it before, but I would like to see for the budget committee to convene outside of budget season to do some education stuff. So not necessarily around the budget itself, but around how to read the budget, how to look at it, what what the general fund means, you know, those kinds of things. Because even if you've done it before, I feel like when you only do it once a year, you have to relearn the language again. And so I would like to see the way that we keep people engaged is by doing some educational stuff in between to keep our skills sort of sharp so that, because I feel like our meeting, we are, we have so many meetings around them because we spend the first few remembering how to read everything and remembering what's what and who goes where and that kind of thing. If we could do that outside of the actual budget season, then it feels like we could get more done in a smaller amount of time because everybody's skills will sort of be sharp and up to date. So that's what I would like to see is is to go to that two year budget, but then to fill in with regular sessions that are educational.
Denise.
I I agree with what Stephanie said. I I best guess it probably took me four years to really understand the budget. And then if you're doing it every two years, people will completely forget in between. So if there's some way to go back and check back in, make sure we are meeting our goals, maybe not change it, but look at it, see where we are, check in, hear the language a little bit more, I agree with that.
Yeah. Oh, that was the only other thing I was going to add because I don't like to recall too much now of the first budget cycle that we did. So thinking about two years from now, like that was just, so I really appreciate Stephanie's suggestion, not only for like the counselors, but also for the public. I think it'd be great if we get an educational piece there as well.
You know, I just to add to that, I think, you know, the supplemental budget period is a time that you could try, you could bring it into to keep the budget committee, you know, apprised of of what's going on and how we're how we're operating, so. All right, any other comments? I'm not seeing any other hands except lingering hands, you lingering hands, folks, Denise. All right, all right, there it is. All right, so Elise, you got, is that a hand?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much to Matt. I mean, you were super patient with me upfront, not and having a million questions and you're you're a really good egg and I'm really sad to see you go, but I'm happy for you and I just really want you to know how much we appreciate you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And and thank you, and again, for this too, thank you to Caleb and to Dan as well. It's, you know, takes takes a village, as they say, so 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 thank you. All right, anything else, folks? All right, why don't we come back at seven oh five for the business session of this evening's entertainment? So, all right, mute yourselves. All right, here we go. Good evening, folks. This is the city council business session for December seventh, twenty twenty. And you can meet, join this meeting by Zoom or by calling in. This meeting is now called to order, a roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Blancarte. Mayor Rogers.
President.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
And Counselor Finley.
Here.
And I see Jules, okay. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Coffield is absent this evening and the District Five seat is currently vacant.
Counselor Coffield feels better soonest. There it is, if you're listening out there, Bryce, we're thinking of you. All right, let's go, the president of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and moving right into the city manager's report.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep it brief. I know we've got a few discussion items for tonight. Just a quick update on everyone's favorite topic, COVID. And where the city stands with that is continuing with the after the freeze into the restrictions of our county, guessing for quite a while. We're keeping an eye on the health numbers and I know Counselor, Counselor Yarnell Hallman has intimate knowledge of the numbers and can give me the thumbs up or the the nod as to, yep, will be added for a while. And, you know, in essence, the court is doing remote appearances. They're doing it by phone for now. We may switch over into a video mode at some point. We're kind of exploring the options there and seeing how it works. Public safety lobby is closed. The library is closed, that they are ramping up the curbside service and hopefully folks are enjoying that. I've hear that they're quite busy. I think we're getting the steps in for the library staff and they're they're doing a lot of activity up and down, gathering book bundles and things like that for the the consumers. The city hall folks are here, but we're definitely very thinned out and a lot of folks are working from home, trying to maximize that to the extent that we can, but making sure that we are providing that that service, the in person service is needed for development services and some other functions in in the in the organization. Generally speaking, also trying to make sure everyone is aware in the business community that Yamhill County has a grant program. It's on our website and promoted for right now. It is dispersing one point four million that the county received from the state, fifty five million the governor released for business relief. Grant awards up to ten thousand dollars for businesses up to a hundred employees. There's a lot of detail of the program and a lot of information on our website. So encourage folks who are interested in in looking for some business relief to check out the website and or Yamhill County website. Also, just really quickly, an update that, you know, other non COVID work, you know, was able to to touch base with our equity assessment consultant and that process is moving forward. We've gotten her some demographics for city employees and our hiring of late for the last few years and are also in the process of having her review some policies, procedures, et cetera. She's already, in our brief conversation noted that there are some opportunities for us, not surprised to hear that, but some things that we might consider. She's going to put a shortlist together, but some things we discussed was an equity statement and some other guidelines around hiring and and principles like that. So I think we'll we'll learn a lot from this process. I'm excited to get some additional feedback and the process is moving forward, which is great to hear. And, you know, I think with the holidays and everything, one of those good news items, for me at least, is just checking in on that. I think I'm going to probably actually leave it there. You know, I think that we already talked about priority and program based budgeting, which is, I I think, a pretty interesting, even though a very dry topic, but I think is going to be fundamental to our future, really understanding the work that we all do. And then, you know, I think we're going to talk in a little bit about communication, which is another thing, how do we put information in the hands of residents and stakeholders? So I'm excited about the agenda tonight and hopefully it will be interesting and we'll have some good discussion.
All right, any any questions or comments for Dan? All right, I'm not seeing any blue hands, so let's move into public comments. So this is a portion of the of the evening, when general public comments from the public on any topic that is not necessarily on the agenda. And I think I've got Sue informs, we've got Jared Jones on the line. Mr. Jones, when you are ready, we are ready for your comments.
Thank you very much for your time. I am grateful to live in a city where citizens peacefully demonstrate their support for various causes. I'm grateful for the show of support from the police officers who attended and handed out water during a gathering to support black lives at the cultural center last summer. I'm grateful that interim chief Cosmiki made an adjustment to policy last summer and then met for an hour with me, just a concerned citizen, to hear my perspective and to share his. All of these are ways that democracy should work. I also think it is right to keep improving. You, our city council, can work to solve actual problems and prevent potential ones. Obviously, you believe that or you would not be devoting many hours a week to work for our community. From my privileged perspective, it's easy to think that NDPD is functioning exactly as it should. But I have heard from, I have heard some unfortunate stories from friends and acquaintances, particularly people of color, about some Newburgh police officers and systems, experiences that should not have happened to them. These stories leave me with a choice. I can either support these folks in asking for some real change or I can ask questions about their truthfulness. I have no reason to doubt them. I simply don't want anyone to be hurt or killed. I don't want my hometown to be the next one to jump from obscurity into the headlines due to police shooting. And I'm sure no one here does, least of all our police officers. I'm not here to accuse or blame any person. I believe the officers have good intentions. I also know that as a human being myself, I don't always and automatically live out my good intentions. I improve with focus, input, feedback and practice. I want no less from the humans who carry badges and guns in my community. The stakes are high for them and for all of us. I recently heard a Louisiana National Guard leader say his model of leadership was that everything that my subordinates do that is right is their fault. Everything they do that is wrong is my fault. And the reason that it's my fault is that I failed to train them, failed to resource them or failed to clearly define the objectives. Leadership in a police department goes all the way to the city council and ultimately to the citizens who, according to the Declaration of Independence, invest authority in those leaders by our votes and our consent. This is why I do not buy the bad apples theory about police shootings. I suspect most officers who do wrong are not individually more evil than you or I. Their jobs put them in extreme situations with limited tools and options and they move in the direction their culture has taught them to. It is our job to shift that culture toward justice. Newburgh should invest in our people and our systems to make the outcomes of every situation the best possible, the least harmful. I could write a holiday wish list of all the things I want in the ideal city. That would include body cameras, extensive training and human relations, a strong support network of mental health professionals, a robust addiction recovery system and a strong economy that employs everyone meaningfully and ends poverty. If you can grant me that, by all means, please do. But in the real world, tonight, I'm asking for four things which I believe are within your power. Number one, expect all NDPD officers to commit to learning about implicit bias, which is different from calling every cop or white person a racist and is a scientifically proven reality that influences the decisions of every human every day. Every member of the department should be actively training, reading and understanding not just police tactics and techniques, but also concepts and practices that humanize people, that make it a priority to understand and overcome the subtlest unintentional biases within themselves. We should expect this from the top to the bottom and to fund it fully as part of the job. Number two, make this commitment a priority in the search for the next permanent police chief. Select a chief who has proven a proven track record of learning and leading on these issues. A nationwide search is a worthwhile investment. I'm glad you're pursuing that. If if interim chief Cosmic is the right person for the job, he will get it confirmed by that search. Number three, create a citizen review board to continuously improve policing in Newburgh. Citizen volunteers, not NDPD employees, should receive the community's concerns about police and should recommend policy changes to the city council. And number four, shift prior budget priorities to maximize effective community policing. Again, I would prefer not to reduce a single police officer's job. In a perfect world, officers would have more resources themselves, plus the support of other professionals. In this real world, with a recession likely to worsen, the choices are harder than ever. But even in hard times, the budget reflects the city's priorities. I believe it is possible to support people in crisis by funding some additional services that come alongside armed officers and may be more appropriate for solving some problems. Body cameras may cost NDPD a million dollars, but their effectiveness is in dispute, whereas hiring mental health professionals may cost a fraction of that. Employ humans and help our community every day, not just in occasional controversies. I'm convinced that meaningful improvement is possible without massive budget outlays. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jared, thank you, thank you very much. And I've got to give you also credit for hitting the five minute mark nearly exactly. So I hope I hope that as, you know, and I'm sure you will, but as as we go through the process of the recruitment and the hiring of the permanent chief, that you and others that are concerned will join in the communication. I know that city manager Weinheimer has made that a priority, that the community will be involved in the in this in this search. And so hopefully, Jared, you will as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing, anything on issue tracker, Dan?
Nope.
Okay, all right, moving along from there, public hearing, this is item six A on your agenda. Resolution twenty twenty thirty six ninety six, adopting supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty 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 one. And this is an administrative public hearing, so I will open the hearing now. And if anybody has any declarations of conflict of interest, you can state them now. All right, hearing done, Sue, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, I'll close the public comments section then, and let's move right into the supplemental budget, Mr. Zuck.
Good day, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, we are presenting you with supplemental budget number one and the recommendation would be to adopt, there's this resolution. As laid out in the staff report, there are thirteen different funds affected and in particular, their resolution and exhibit A details out most of the financial impacts in a fund and a program level and appropriation level. The staff report was meant to take the same information and make make it a little bit more meaningful in three different categories. And I'd like to go through those real briefly. The first category is the CARES Fund, excuse me, the CARES Act funding. The first category is the CARES Fund, excuse me, the CARES Act Funding Section. And without reading the entire report, I've listed out, well, let me back up. The city has received about $860,000 in grant funds from the state of Oregon this calendar year, broken up into two fiscal years. And I've done that on the staff report. Last fiscal year, we received 323,000 and some change. And then this current fiscal year, we anticipate receiving 535,000. And so you've heard a lot about that through the city manager report very frequently and in the council meetings. But this is a list that outlines pretty much everything we've either incurred or encumbered to date. And so I I've taken the time in the staff report to indicate the the items that would require us to do supplemental budget. And so generally, what this means is we're getting revenue in and increasing our expenses to, increasing our budget to cover the things that are going out for those, for those expenses. So, you know, the various things covered by CARES Act, things, you know, directly related to COVID, like cleaning, disinfecting, you know, protection, time off, you know, staff time off, you know, staff work time on COVID related stuff. You know, technology and remote working tools, as well as some contributions and grants towards entities for, out in the community. We, you can also see that we've had some pretty successful programs with direct aid to our citizens and our businesses through the, the Berg, the Business Emergency Relief Grant and the Support Local Challenge. And there, there's a complete list there on the, in the staff report. So the, the CARES Act, this public hearing was noticed in the newspaper through the Newborough Graphic last Wednesday. And subsequent to us putting that in the newspaper, we learned that one of our intended purposes would not be, you know, completed by the December 30th, December 30th deadline, and that was the dispatch workspace remodel, which allows them to appropriately distance, you know, continue to do their work. So we will cover that via city funds. And we pivoted that approximately $8,000 towards a request that we received from the Newbrook School District, which I've included in the staff report that will go towards distance learning and hotspots and other needs in that, that regard. So the, if the, if the council moves forward with this recommendation, what I would ask would be two things in regards to the CARES. One is to reflect the, and I've outlined it on page two of the staff report, that we would allocate 235,000 in, in the general fund, general government section. And that would allow us to, that, that's a change to allow the 8,000 to go towards the school district, not internally on the, the workspace. So that's, that's a change subsequent to, to publication. There is another change in regards in the same line item. Today Caleb and I were reviewing this and rather than allocating that 235,000 in the general fund, general government line item, it's more accurately appropriated to a line called special payments, which is also already on the budget. And so it's just a different categorization, a name change to the existing budget. So I'm hoping that's clear, but it is a, it's something again, we looked at and said that needs to be in a different category. So hopefully that's clear. There's two other categories of expenses that we have presented to you tonight. And I've categorized the second category as carryover. And each year, we, we aim to get our projects done by June 30. And we have some accounting, you know, deadlines to, to make that happen. There are probably, it looks like six different items there in the carryover category where we basically underspent last year, which would have inflated the any fund balance. And we're asking the council to allow us to take that from the, the fund balance or contingency and reappropriate, basically increase the budget so we can continue to spend that money this year. And there are things that just simply didn't get done by June 30th, like the police evidence room, it's a contract we already entered into. There's some like the TIG Information Technology Study and a few other things on there that we typically have. Another, I'll, I'll call out the bigger item on there, which is the 2.3 million dollar street waters who are storm projects. And those typically happen because our budget year falls right smack in the middle of construction. And we make estimations and then things change over time, depending on which fiscal year crosses into. So Karen and I get together each year and we make those alignments. So the third category of expenses that were, are included in the supplemental budget is what I'm calling the new FY 2021 unanticipated expenditures. And there's a plethora of items on this list pertaining to new opportunities. Doug's gone out and kicked some butt and get some grants, unexpected grants. We have some IT training. We have some, we have the economic health program, some diversity equity inclusion consulting. We have the attorney services that are moving from an internal employee to an outside attorney firm and dispatch remodel. And there's an enterprise zone tax abatement forfeiture that's on there as well. So the fiscal impact of this entire budget increases the appropriations by 3.6 million, bringing the total appropriations to 101 million. And there's some other numbers there to just kind of break down the different budget categories. And then finally, there's a resolution and again, exhibit A to the resolution has the detail, this was what was published with the exception of the changes that I've recommended tonight. And I can, if the council's prerogative is to move forward with this, which I hope it is, I can walk through those changes to make sure that they get incorporated into the resolution. So Mayor, that's my staff report.
Thank you. Questions for Matt, folks? I'm looking for blue hands. Not seeing any hands. All right, you want me to go first? I'll go first. Just first, one question, the unanticipated expenditures for 2020, 2020, 2021. Is that the 92,000 showing us, is that grants? It, it appears as, is it expenditures or is that income?
It's both. Yeah, and I don't know if Doug, you want, you know, providing a color commentary on that. But yes, those are grants that we would be receiving that revenue and thus turn around expending, you know, grant money out.
Okay, great. Thank you. The, you know, the next question, and this is, I guess, it's going to be an overall question, but the request from the Newbrook School District. So I don't know, I don't know how many counselors had heard about this prior to tonight, anybody? All right, I, you know, I gotta, I mean, I'm interested because I see the one pager, or I guess it's a page and a half. Do we know, when did we get this? Do we know when we got this request? Okay, that's the first question. Second question is, you know, that's, I'm not sure, did the, did the school district get code? Did they get CARES Act money? I'm not sure why we're giving money to the school district. I think it's, don't, don't get me wrong. This is the same thing as Project Oasis. This is now the school district. I don't think it's a bad idea. I'm not sure why we're doing it. I also think, you know, again, I've said it before, we've got 800,000, $860,000 in CARES Act funding that at least 100 and something of it we're hearing about tonight in a supplemental budget.
The, the, the reason for the pivot on the Newbrook School District is we didn't actually anticipate being able to contribute in that regard. It wasn't until we learned that the, the dispatch remodel was not going to meet and be eligible for the grant, that we even had the conversation about that, that extra. So I know that Dan can contribute to that. But I know that at this point in the game with the timeframe coming to December 30th, it was a matter of what can we do, what's shovel ready, basically. So.
Okay.
You, that's, that's.
Right. And I get it, that's the third time anyway, I've heard about the deadline of December 31st to spend the CARES money. I, I, I don't know that we've heard any discussion about the relative merits of how to spend it. I've, I think we asked on November 16th, is there something that we could do for the businesses in our community? Is there anything that we're doing immediately with the shutdown? That's my opinion. But anyway, Denise, it's, your hand is up.
Okay, fundamentally, I don't see it as the same as Project Oasis because it's another taxing district. And to me, that in itself is problematic. I, I don't like that kind of action. I am, however, this, I'm not counting this into that normal, how I would normally feel. If, you know, of course, I want to help our children long term. That is the better thing for us to do as a society. But I am fundamentally against switching monies from one taxing district to another.
Other comments, folks? And again, don't, don't get me wrong, again, on Project Oasis. The, the problem with me, for me there was, again, how it was presented. There wasn't enough information in my mind. And that's why, not that it was a bad idea necessarily, but it was a decision that came to us, I think, without, in my mind, adequate discussion of the $860,000 in COVID money, to be honest. So that's, that's my take on it. Again, please don't get me wrong. Whoever may be listening, it's not that I don't care about the kids because that is not it. But it is a question as to what is our role in this, in this community? And I, I would like to know, and I don't see it in here, is how much money did the school district receive from CARES funding? And, and I'm pretty sure they just passed a bond.
I don't.
Yeah, I don't think we have that number.
Right. I was gonna say, we don't, I don't know how much they've received, if any.
Mr. Mayor, Joe Morlock is on the attendee side. Would you like me to promote him to panelists so we can answer your question?
I'd just like to know, when do we need to know about this supplemental budget? Is there, is there, is it, is it time sensitive?
Some of it is. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just asking, is the question the school district portion or is it the rest of the supplemental?
Yeah, well, you've got one resolution, so I don't know, you know, which, which of the, I mean, do you need this? Do you need this approved tonight?
Well, I think the majority of it is, well, I mean, obviously, I suppose it's up to you as far as approving it. I think it's ready to be approved. I think the option was to, you know, fund the school district with the remainder. I mean, what we had talked about before was that we didn't necessarily need to spend it. So we're offering an option to spend the money that, eighty, that we had planned for the, the budget or for the dispatch consoles in the budget that we found out at the last minute isn't going to be spent. So we're, we're just providing an option. So that's really it, you know, it doesn't necessarily, I, I don't think it takes the entire thing off the rails, as it were. I think it's more just an option.
Okay. I mean, in the discussion of this, and, and did we talk at all about maybe running another round of Berg funding? Struggling out there?
We have to, it has to be allocated and spent by the 30th of this year, of this month. And so the reality of being able to do that with this money, it's probably not possible. Just the, you know, getting it stood up and getting information to people to apply and all the other process steps. I don't think it's possible, but we've talked about doing another round of the Support Local Challenge, and that wouldn't be contingent on CARES Act funding. And so it'd give us a little bit more time to get the program stood up.
Other questions, folks? What's your pleasure, folks?
So I'm kind of struggling with this too. I wish there was another option. And I, you know, I, I hate being in the use it or lose it category because that's where we are at this point. But I also hate to just use it in a way that doesn't necessarily fall in line with what I think is necessarily the right thing to do. And I wish there was another option. And I know that doesn't solve anything, but I, I wish there had been another option on the table of where we could give a big chunk of money that wasn't sort of feeling like that double dip into another tax, taxing district. So I am struggling with this one as well. And I love the schools and I would love to give this money to them, but I also, they just passed a bond and yeah, that part is, is, is holding me back a little bit.
Mayor, if I might, that's a, yeah, just to answer your question about, you know, the moving forward this evening. I was, I would say that, you know, I would, I would recommend not throwing out the whole enchilada. It's like a contract. If there's a part of the contract that's, you know, and they'll avoid, it doesn't avoid the rest of the contract. I would say if the council really wants to shape that differently, we can do that on the fly in the, in the meeting tonight and move forward with the parts that you do agree with, whether that's the whole, whether that's the whole resolution or modify the resolution with, in the, in the course of the motion. So.
Yeah, I just, you know, again, I, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to try to do that if we need to. I just, again, I just, and this is for whatever it's worth. And this is me and probably just me, but I still see us spending $860,000 in CARES Act funding. I don't feel that we generally discuss this in any depth of, as to how this money might have been spent. I feel it's being brought to us piecemeal, and it has been the entire time. Up to and including on here, we have a position that's now being funded that came as COVID as a, as a CARES Act funding start and is now being a permanent position that we're paying throughout of the budget. So again, the age of that is there's no real thing, there's no such thing as free money. So how, Matt, how would you envision reframing this if you wanted to have more consideration for the school district portion?
Well, there's certainly, there's one recommendation I have is if you wanted to, if there's some angst about that funding, you know, we're not talking about the decision necessarily to, to do that. We're talking about mending the budget. You, we could take the, you know, that amount, you know, off the table if you want and, and say the, and use the grant in a different way, essentially. I mean, if there's one, if there needs to be a dialogue about, you know, between council and Dan about, you know, how that's, that's handled, that's, that's one way of handling it. I would make the recommendation that we just modify the amount of general fund, special payments category to a different amount. And there's time if we needed to, to come back on September 17th, excuse me, whatever the, count 21st, yeah, 21, and do something there as well. So I mean, there's, there is some time to pivot on, on that. So I will say that the, you know, the rest of the CARES money is generally, you know, encumbered. Like, like I said, this was the, the remaining discretionary piece of the, the pie here, so.
Stephanie, did you have a comment? I got you. Well, anybody, well, Matt, do, how do you want to do it? Do you want to sort of rework the resolution and we'll come back to it this evening? Or how do you want to do that?
Well, I guess the question, put the question back to you, Mayor. Is there a, an appetite to move forward with everything except for that area that we've been talking about with the, the council? Because I would, I would recommend that we could, in the course of the motion, change that. And I could, you know, walk you through. And I could, you know, walk you through that motion, propose that. And and then if, you know, again, if we need to come back on the 17th with, you know, a different amount. So.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll just do a temperature check and see if people seem that they're okay with that. Thumbs up, nods, what do you all think? Sort of getting the thumbs up. Yeah. All right. Why don't we, why don't we try that then?
As far as a revised motion or revision of the resolution, okay. Well. Let me ask you this question, Mayor, then. Let me just drill down on the.
While you're doing that.
So you know.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was just interested in, because I could vote either way on this. So I was kind of wondering how Elise and Jules were feeling. Because if they're willing, if they want to do the whole thing, I'm willing to do the whole thing. I just have this overarching belief that you shouldn't pass money between funding districts because that's not really fair to the public. But I I would vote either way. So if Jewel, it depends on how Jules and Elise feel.
Yeah, thank you, Denise. I think I was just feeling more like conflicted with like the process as well in terms of like just finding out about this more recently, like the the funding for like the school. And then just, I think the fact that it is like a, we either keep it or we lose it. Like, what are our options? You know, we have like, what, 20 days or so left of the month? Like, what, what, what can we put out there for the community that's actually going to be beneficial in that time? And just like, I think, just, you know, reiterating what Rick said, the process through this hasn't really seemed transparent so far. And so it's just a little bit frustrating. If this was to go forward, I would vote, I would vote for it because I think that we should, you know, be helping the school. But it just, it's, it's not like a good feeling to go forward with this just because of the lack of transparency, I feel like, through the process.
Elise?
Well, I'm kind of curious what Dan's, was going through Dan's mind right now as we're all talking. I, not to put you on the spot, Dan, but I'm kind of on the same page as everyone of, I, I don't want it to just be lost money. I think this has been just an incredible time for everyone. So I, I want it to be used for our community specifically. But I do struggle with the same sentiments that both Rick and Denise and Stephanie and Jules have all said.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I guess I chafe at the idea that it hasn't been transparent, you know, honestly. Because I think that what we've tried to do is have communication with y'all on a regular basis. I have about allocations, you know, going forward and in particular, trying to do that before we hired staff member or expended things on on other items. And so frankly, you know, we've tried to do the best we could to use the funds as intended, in essence, to protect our staff, to protect, you know, the ongoing operations, to provide business assistance, to provide community assistance. And we had intention to spend the money on the dispatch consoles, you know, and, and, you know, unfortunately, just due to supply chain issue, you know, they're pushed out until, it sounds like February at this point. And so, you know, happy to to continue to to spend that money, you know, and looking to do that in our budget. And so we went to plan B or C or D at this point. I mean, we've continued to try to pivot on this and in essence, just finding that out after this item was prepared, really. So, you know, you can have an idea of the timeframe we're talking about. And so, you know, it's an option that was on the table. And so which wanted to provide it to you as an option? And and we're not pushing you one way or the other. We're just trying to give you an option to spend the money. And so it's totally your call and, you know, really take to heart the comment that we didn't, or we don't want to necessarily leave money on the table. But we also, you know, this wasn't anticipated revenue. And so on some level, it is what it is, I suppose, if we we end up not spending it all. It's not a requirement and we've fulfilled a fair amount of the needs, the immediate and ongoing needs through the nine months that COVID has been around. And I think it's set us up to do well going into the near future. You know, obviously, who knows if there's another stimulus package or anything else coming from the federal government to, you know, do the next few months, year, or whatever we're looking at for COVID. But I think we're able to do a lot of things with telework now and and technology. And so we'll look to our budget for the next, next dose of that, I suppose. Unless the federal program comes along. But, you know, in essence, this is just essentially just trying to give you an option. So it really is one of those things where I guess I see the ability, the connectivity between the school district and the city on our funding of folks who are in the community, working, teleworking and parenting and trying to do the, do it all. And how hard that is. And so just trying to provide some funding to the project the school district proposed from our perspective of of thinking about the folks who are working from home. While the school district is probably trying to make sure the kids have computers and, you know, the Chromebooks and the connectivity for the schoolwork. So that was the nexus of the project as proposed. And, you know, it is, it would certainly, it's up to you as to how to spend that money.
Stephanie?
I'll be honest, part of, part of what sort of took me back about the school district piece is a, is what it will be spent on. And I know there's a huge need for those hotspots and things like that. But honestly, if they were asking for these funds to do something like give to the Edwards team to do more dual language or Spanish outreach for families or mental health outreach or things like that, I would have been less likely to be critical of it because I feel like that would feel a little more like taking care of our city in a way that, you know, we don't have a lot of resources right now. And so that's part of it. And I know that, you know, we don't have control over that, but that's just for this, you know, on the side of what it's being spent on is also one of my concerns is I would have loved to see like, we're going to employ a Spanish speaking mental health therapist that's going to do some outreach or things of that nature that that would seem like a little better overlap for us for what our goals are here at the city. So I would, I, yeah.
Elise?
I guess I just, having my, my work hat on, I know how fluid things are right now. And, you know, standing up testing, I mean, I'm on vendor six. And it's not a joke. I mean, it's these, I just, I think we need to give grace and to people and where they're at and not perfectly aligning with our goals of a city. I know that the schools have been doing a ton around mental health and Spanish speaking mental health specifically. So, you know, I think I feel comfortable at this point, you know, everyone's doing the very best that they can. And this is the very end of the road of this funding. And I feel like there, every, every, every system right now could be doing better. And we're, and I just, I, I think it's, I guess it's my, my plea that we give a little grace in this and and do it from more of a, we're aligned as systems for our community right now.
Make the motion, Elise.
You know, one thing I'd just like to clarify for those who are listening. We, and Dan, we're presenting one option for this money in the resolution. We aren't being presented any more than one. And it's, and it is the school district. And again, please don't get me wrong. I absolutely believe that the times are tough for everybody. But and maybe this is just me being a stickler on process. But even in these times of crisis, I think we have to make sure that we are vetting and have things to compare against. So, but if someone would like to, that would be great.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2020-3696, approval of supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Second. Who was that? Sorry.
Jules.
Jules. Oh, and Matt, I'm in here.
Yes, sorry. Now that you've tipped, or now that you've brought the resolution forward, let me, may I ask, irregardless of the discussion around the school district, could I ask that that motion reflects two changes not related to that event, which would be that the general fund, general government amount be re-categorized to special payments? That's the correct category now is my, just a, you know, set clerical error, categorization error. So, and and then as reflected in the staff report, that the amounts would be reflected as as indicated in the staff report. That's the easiest way to put it into a motion and I can make it, the resolution modified after, you know, after the fact. So I would ask that the motion would reflect those, that type of language.
Can I just say that the motion reflects what Matt just just stated? Okay.
All right. Can I just clarify? And your motion is to adopt as presented, right?
Yes. With those, with, with the.
Matt, yeah, got it. Okay. Any further discussion, folks? All right, let's get a voice vote, Sue, if we could.
Mr. Mayor, this is a vote for resolution 2020-3696 with two amendments. Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Yes.
I can't hear you, Elise.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Oh.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes for one.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, item 7A, resolution 2020-3705, a resolution accepting the infrastructure-based time extension technical memorandums. And I understand this is going to be Mr. Rux and Brett Music as well, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just take a moment just to kind of cue this up. So this presentation is related to House Bill 2001. And this is the middle housing component of that. And in the administrative rule that was adopted, there's a provision to ask for a time extension request if you have infra-infrastructural deficiencies. And so we've worked with consultants and with the engineering department to do that. I know Brett has some additional details in the proposal. I think one thing that's important to note is that to make the request to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, we have to do that by December 31st of 2020 for that particular consideration. So with that, I will turn it over to Brett.
Good evening, Commissioner. Good evening, councilors. Sue, do you have the PowerPoint?
Just a moment, having a few technical difficulties here.
Okay, thank, thank you.
There we go. Yep, nope, sorry. There we go, success.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening. I'm Brett Music, as Doug pointed out, I'm a senior engineer here at City Newburgh. And I'm presenting the outcome of our analysis related to the infrastructure-based time extension request. That's where we evaluated two areas within the city of Newburgh to determine if there are infrastructure deficiencies to accommodate middle housing. Next slide. A little background on this, Doug could point out, this is related to the House Bill 2001 for middle housing. This requires the updates to local laws that currently limit the types of housing and proven residential zones. Middle housing includes duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhouses. We received a grant to be able to do this evaluation of the transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater infrastructure in the two areas that we identified as potentially a meeting upgrades to the existing infrastructure. Next slide, please. So the scope and purpose of the bigger analysis, the IBTR analysis, is to identify any infrastructure constraints to make certain we can handle the increases in the density. As Doug pointed out, this application for this is due to DLCD by December 31st. The approved IBTR application will give the city additional time to comply with the requirements of the House Bill 2001 for middle, for missing middle housing. Next slide, slide, please. The areas we looked at were north of downtown, between the railroad and North Meridian, and then south of downtown between Chehalis Creek and Hess Creek. Next slide, please. OAR Division 46 provided the criteria and thresholds in order to justify a time extension request. Or now our consultants did the analysis and the memos are attached to, in your packet. Next slide, please. So the transportation analysis concluded there's no impact. And this is due to the minimal amount of increase in vehicle trips associated with the increases. Next slide, please. The stormwater analysis also included concluded there was no impact. And the consultants concluded that a significant stormwater infrastructure deficiency is not expected to be caused only by the middle additional addition of middle housing development. And at the proposed capital improvements in the existing 2014 Stormwater Master Plan provides acceptable service levels. Next slide, please. Again, the wastewater analysis identified that no impact. And that's due to the minimal increase in base and peak flows. Next slide, please. The water analysis did identify that there was deficiencies in this related to fire flow. The small diameter four and six inch diameter pipe grids in the South Study area create flow velocities over 20 feet per second during a flow event. And a six inch diameter main is inadequate to provide the 2,000 gallon per minute needed for multifamily residential fire flows allowed for the types of housing within the middle housing component. Next slide, please. So the consultant identified projects, eight projects in the south area and one project in the north. The estimated project cost for this is approximately $6.2 million with the projects anticipated to begin as early as fiscal year 2020, 21, 22, and continue through fiscal year 28, 29. Any questions?
Questions, folks, Stephanie? No, all right. Questions, anyone else? Okay, I think, okay, so I want to make sure that I understand this, Brett and Doug. So middle housing, it's in this two study areas that you've got identified. It looks like they're, they're projecting an increase of 22 units of housing. Was that, did I see that somewhere?
Correct.
Okay. And with those 22 units, we need to spend 6.2 million in order to get the water improvements to a place where we could increase the density. Is that right?
That's the conclusions with the, with the small water, water pipes that exist within the area and the.
So, and so that means that if we're going to pursue these projects, they will not be done until 28, 29.
That's based on our current estimations, yes.
Okay. So, so that means that how long, if we ask the DLCD, whoever we're asking, for a time-based extension, how long will that extension be for?
Mayor, this is Doug Rux. It would be to fiscal year 28, 29. DLCD could look at that and say, no, we don't agree with that. We'll give you an extension, you know, for a shorter time period, which would then put us in a position to try to find where do we come up with the funds in order to address the water deficiency.
Are these, are these projects that are already identified in the Water Master Plan?
No, they are not.
So, okay.
So I think, Mayor, the the issue is, is that with the new, with the law that was passed and the administrative rule that was adopted by LCDC that is now in effect, is that we have to allow this additional middle housing. And so when we step back and looked at the entire community, we identified where we believed that they we were going to potentially have an issue, and that was in the older parts of town. And what the analysis came out and said is we were okay with water. I mean, with transportation, stormwater and wastewater, but we have an issue with water. So to allow that mental housing to occur, there needs, funds need to be identified to make those particular improvements. As Brett said, it's about 6.2 million dollars. So if there was development that was going to occur, unless they somebody had a parcel and they wanted to put in a triplex as an example, then we're going to have to sit down with them and say, okay, well, what water infrastructure do you need to do to improve in the city system in order to be able to allow that development to occur? So this gets to that issue of rough proportionality. You know, you do a development, it's going to cost X, but then the infrastructure costs Y. And if the infrastructure costs, again, it's a not a mathematical formula, but is not proportional to the cost of the development, then how can the city require them to do that development? And that development then can't happen because we don't have the water infrastructure in order to accommodate the development. So it gets into a catch 22 system. But we're bound, we have to have the duplex provisions in place by June 30th of 2021. The balance of it by the direction of council was at the time is that we also applied to deal with the triplex, the quads, the townhomes and the clusters. So we got another grant for that and we're in that process now.
Okay, well, this, I mean, as far as I understand, the the bill came through as an affordable housing move, right? That was why it came about, increased density and therefore hopefully reduce cost.
That is correct, but there was the other side of the ledger of this is what about the cost of the infrastructure to support that development pattern?
Well, I'll just, I'll just say this, it's, you know, 6.2 million for 22 houses is what we're projecting, right? I mean, and it's just interesting to me because when when we talked about things like ADUs and and increasing that legislation, we did not talk about infrastructure for ADUs. And yet that's an increase in density as well. And in these two service areas, because of the larger lots, I could see where hopefully we would see a few ADUs, which would put more strain on the systems. So I'm a little, I'm a little I'm a little perplexed, I guess. Because it basically says, I mean, if I understand this correctly, you're basically saying that we will not be able to do any of this increased density in these two areas until 28, 29.
Well, there would be an incremental component of this. And so city engineer has looked at what projects we can start with. So there may be sub areas within the South Sub Area that could accommodate middle housing. But to fully say all at once, the South Area, you can come in and do that, is that we have a water system issue with the fire flow.
So I'll add one thing to that is in the North Area, there is just the one project and that's a project that's anticipated to be be done fairly quickly in the next fiscal year toward the following. So that opens up the North Area.
I mean, I guess this, you know, it also comes back to the prioritization of capital improvement projects. And whether this comes back to what we talked about at the onset of our project-based budgeting and of whether a goal is affordable housing, then how are we going to entertain that? So this seems to be sort of going counter to that in my view, but anyway, anyone else? All right, so Brett, then what is your recommendation?
The recommendation is for the council to adopt Resolution Number 2020 dash 3705.
All right, do we have a motion, folks?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Stephanie.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020 dash 3705.
Second.
Okay, second, Denise, Denise on the second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You know, I don't know what it is about me tonight. Maybe I'm just woke up on the wrong side of the bed, but I'm going to, I'm going to say no. I think it counter to the, I think it goes counter to what we are trying to do with affordable housing. So I think we'd also, I think we need to look, and we talked about this earlier, I think we really need to look at SDCs and the capital improvement project list and target them more directly to things like council goals. There we go. All right, moving along. The communication plan, this is item seven B on your program, Communication Plan Discovery Report Presentation. Good evening, Lacy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. So I'm here with Kim Newcomer and Liz Cassie from Slate Communications. And we are going to be presenting on the discovery report tonight that will be used to craft the communications plan, strategy and toolkit for the city of Newburgh. The discovery report presents the findings from the communications consultant Slate that was developed through an audit of our city master plans, as well as viewing our current marketing outlets and materials, input from an internal city communications committee, interviews with department heads and community partners and survey results from both an internal and an external survey. So tonight, what we're hoping for from council is just some initial feedback from our discovery report and the findings that we had. And then we will also be talking about the direction we intend to take the communications plan. And so some of your feedback on that as well. For a bit of background, this plan is possible due to an increase in the community engagement budget that was earmarked to be used to hire a consultant to create a communications plan for the city. The city of Newburgh has never had a communications plan before. And so this is really a first time for the city. So in July of 2020, we drafted and sent out an RFP looking for a communication consultant. Within the RFP, there were three different categories that we were focused on, and that was strategic communication, which involved the creation of a communications plan and strategy, communication tools, which was kind of creating some tools for staff, including templates and guidelines and sort of checklist and processes, as well as communication support from Slate. And that involves both creating like a video library and photo library, as well as offering their marketing support on projects that need a little bit more marketing materials created. So from that RFP, we received four different proposals from firms located around the United States. And after interviewing three of those, we chose Slate Communications. Not only was Slate able to offer the most within our budget, they also bring a combined 68 years of experience in branding and communications for cities. They have a lot of experience in helping create communications plan, marketing materials and strategies for cities throughout the United States. And so we're excited to work with them. I think during your present, the presentation, we're going to see some examples of things they've done in the past for different cities. So while the discovery report is an initial step in the whole process, Slate will also be working with us to help formalize our brand as a city, draft both a communication span and an implementation plan. So they're going to be here to help us actually implement the plan going forward. They're also going to provide that communication toolbox for us in the way of the brand templates and an online resource, as well as providing that communication support. So on to the why behind all of this. So the purpose of all this work in creating communications plan is really to help formalize the city's communications and create more and better engagement with Newburgh residents. It's going to help us create systems and tools that will make it easier for all city employees, as well as all of the residents to really engage back with us. Speaking directly to the city council goals, creating more formalized systems and better communication and engagement practices relates directly to customer service, equity, inclusion and sustainability. So the communication plan aims to help our operational culture to enhance customer service by providing employees the tools that they need to engage with and better communicate with all residents. We know customer service and communication is not a one-way street, especially at a city. And so the communications plan will really help us identify strategies as well as create guidelines to help employees engage more with the community by providing more avenues and more avenues for engagement and conversations within the community. It will also help make all of our materials more professional and user-friendly, which will enhance the usability of all of our items from our website to forms and more going forward. It's also, the communication plan is an important element for enhancing equity and inclusion in the city by addressing the city's need to engage more with our diverse communities, both informing them about city services and engaging in conversations to learn how we can do better and collaborate on common interests with our diverse communities. We recognize the need for strategies that go beyond conventional marketing methods to ensure our projects, budget and how we function reflect our entire community, not just those who know how to make their voice heard and navigate our systems already. The plan will provide all departments with strategies, tools and resources to improve our community engagement with our diverse communities. To help identify some of this need and as part of the development of the discovery report that you're about to hear, we did survey community members and we met with partner organizations to learn how we could improve, improve where we're currently getting it wrong and what they actually wanted from the city in communication. Because once again, it's about engagement and we're not going to tell them how we're going to communicate. We want to know what they actually want to know from us. So finally, the communications plan will help address sustainability by creating systems and processes that are delivered to all Newburgh employees and can be used for years to come. So the plan, once we have a plan in place, once again, this is the discovery report, so the information that we're using to create the plan, we'll also be creating the implementation plan that will be a two-year-long process. And it's going to be revisited every six months to make sure it's working. And that is all in place in order to create more sustainable processes, tools and systems within the city. So it's not a person, it's a process. And no matter who comes in, they know where they fit within that process. So that was really my intro. And now I'm going to hand it over to him and Liz to actually talk about the discovery report itself.
Thank you, Lacy. Mayor and councilors, thank you for having us here today. I'll introduce myself quickly, but I have to say, Lacy, after that introduction, I feel like we could probably just stop now. That was so well done and and well put. So just quickly, my name is Kim Newcomer. I'm the CEO and founder of Slate Communications. We are a public relations and marketing firm that works almost exclusively with local governments. And we actually founded Slate on this crazy idea that informed and engaged residents make for better communities. And that's what we set out to do is to help different cities, towns, counties across the nation better connect with their residents so that everybody can engage in making those communities better. Liz, before we dive into it, why not you introduce yourself as well?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. So my name is Liz Cassie. I'm a communication specialist with Slate, been with them about six years now. So I've been really helping Lacy in this process of doing a lot of that backend research. So I've been part of those conversations with staff and stakeholders and helping with that community survey. So it's been really helpful to get to know both the community and the people that make it up to understand kind of where communication fits into all of this. So excited to share what we've learned so far.
Wonderful. Well, as Lacy mentioned, tonight is really about an opportunity to check in with you as our community leaders. We want to share with you some of the things that we've learned through all of the methods that Lacy outlined earlier and really just get your feedback on how this resonates. Some of the things we share probably won't be a surprise, others might be. But really what we want to talk about is how we plan to use this information moving forward. And this communications plan is really the first foundational step. I think, Lacy, you said it so well, when you explained this as the intention is to create processes and plans and strategies that that stand true no matter who's leading the effort, right? What we want to do is actually bring this into the organization. It is what we've found over again and again and again, communications and better yet, successful communications is not the work of one person. It is the work of an entire organization. And what we're trying to do with this plan is bring all of those resources to bear so that we can all get on the same page to just be a little bit more successful in how we engage residents. And, you know, let's talk about the plan itself just a little bit. And, you know, really what we tried to, what we're trying to accomplish with this is creating this framework for operations. Really, we want this to be a toolkit for staff. This is not just a toolkit for Lacy and her department. This is intended to be a resource, a tangible resource for the entire organization. In that same vein, we want this to be practical guidance for implementable success. We understand the amount of work and energy and resources that go into communications programs. And what we want to do is identify the most efficient ways to get that done. And this is an opportunity for us to really focus on some common messaging and consistency in general. And also an opportunity to create some common expectations. That's both internal and with the community themselves. It's also probably important to talk about what the plan is not. I always like to say, you know, communications can help a lot of things, but it can't help everything. You just had a great conversation about how you plan to improve your budget process. You had a great conversation about maybe expanding some of your hiring processes. Those are all really good, important work that communications can support. But again, this isn't the panacea to fix all things. And the other thing this isn't going to be is an unrealistic dream document, and I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but we want this to work. We want this to be a plan that can actually be accepted by the organization, embraced by staff and implemented, because that's when we start to see results. And then finally, I think it's important to point out that it's not a diversity, equity and inclusion plan. You have a lot, a lot of good work happening in that area. Our intention with this plan is to support that work and also acknowledge that that journey is going to be long and strategic and thoughtful. And what we need to do is make sure we're supporting that effort, but communications won't be the lead effort on that. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the in this presentation. So just to give us some grounding on exactly where we are in this process. And as you heard and had read in the staff report, we did this big audit of existing communications and plans and tools and really tried to better understand what you're doing now, what's working and what's not. And we also are trying to gather feedback from stakeholders, from staff, from other communities, frankly. We're looking at best practices from across the country to try and figure out what's working for folks and what's not. This is probably where we are right now, in between the second bubble and the third bubble. We're not quite to developing those communication strategies and tactics, but we have some really solid framework around that that we want to test with you today. And then the final piece of that is, Lacy had mentioned, is really where the rubber meets the road. And we start to implement some of the ideas and and new concepts that we're sharing in this document.
Yeah, so as Kim mentioned, we've done a lot of, had a lot of conversations, learned a lot about the community and what you guys are currently doing as far as communications and just all sorts of projects in general. So from that, there have been some clear kind of takeaways that have emerged, both regarding external communication, you know, how you interact with the public and have those two-way conversations. And then some of the internal communications to internal communications and collaboration. So we'll go through a few of those key takeaways. Again, like Kim mentioned, some of these might not be a total surprise to you, maybe some will. But these have been really helpful to help guide all of our efforts moving forward. So a couple of things we've learned so far of Newburgh is in transition in a lot of ways. We heard that a lot through our conversations of both in the makeup and the population of the community, you know, you guys are moving, are growing very quickly. How do we adapt to that? Then also, there's been some changes in the city leadership over the past few years. So understanding how that affects communications can help us move forward too. We also know that there might be some mistrust between this, the residents and the city organization, just based on some past interactions. So just keeping that in the back of our head as we go forward with all our communications and trying to figure out how we can remedy some of those situations. We also know that government can be confusing, you know, we can always improve in this area of trying to use less jargon, explain our practices and processes a little bit better, just trying to find ways to make these systems understandable for the average resident. So they don't feel too overwhelmed by what the city is doing. A couple other of these external takeaways is that the city and Lacy are doing a great job with a lot of digital tools. There's some very strong social media platforms in place and the website is a great resource for folks. But we know that digital tools don't reach everyone. So trying to figure out how we reach those underrepresented and under-reached populations moving forward. We heard a lot about how Newburgh is a very close-knit community, which is great to hear about how people try to help each other out and have that caring nature. So with that in mind, we know that relationships and those personal relationships go a long way. And also, if we can, you know, give them great information, then positive word of mouth is going to spread quickly. Maybe even have more of a reach than a social media post in some cases. And again, I think it's really valuable to just continue to think about how Newburgh residents are so close to it and want to help each other out. And that spirit can really help us go forward too. So a couple other internal communication and collaboration items that we've noticed. You know, we recognize there aren't a lot of processes and initiatives in place when it comes to internal communications. But I think there's some things that we have heard as themes that we want to try to improve on in the future. So some of this comes from an item that we heard of, you know, sometimes departments feel a little bit siloed. I think especially in this time of COVID, when people can't always be in the same place at the same time. You know, it's easy to lose track of the things that are going on across different departments and those different. Um, you know, it's easy to lose track of the things that are going on across different departments and those different projects they might not be aware of. So this sometimes comes down, comes down to issues of just inconsistent messaging across different departments, even on similar projects. Um, I think this also relates to just collaboration, and we know that if there's better internal collaboration, we can have better outcomes. And those are the outcomes that the population really sees and matches on to. I think another item we heard kind of around the customer service area that Lacy touched on at the very beginning of this is. Um, talking with the public can be intimidating sometimes, especially if you don't have all the resources and answers at the at your fingertips. So how can we set some expectations and just tools to help um staff members who do interact with the public regularly? Have those resources so they feel confident in the in answering the phone and answering any questions that might come up. And then finally, again, this Newburgh spirit, you know, we've heard a lot about how staff members really do take pride in the work that they do. They love serving the residents of Newburgh. They want to make an impact and have a positive impact on people's lives. So how do we take that human nature and put it into what the public sees as far as the government goes?
Yeah, Liz, I would just harp on that just a little bit, and um Matt, I I think. Um, I don't know if he's still on the phone, but if I could take a moment to just point out. How passionate someone could be about a, you know, a self-confessed dry topic about priority-based budgeting. You can see that people are bringing this pride to their work and we're just not sharing that um more broadly. And so I just feel like tonight was a great example of um staff members really putting in the extra effort to go. Um, to provide good service, to consider the perspective of residents to want to improve processes. And what a great story to tell that perhaps we haven't been telling consistently.
Thanks for that, Kim. Um, so again, through this process, we did kind of a deep dive into the current communications of the city. There's a lot more details in the report that was included in your packets. Um, but we wanted to make sure and call out just a few of the notable things that stood out to us during this process. Um, so a couple of just stats here. One is looking at the city website. On average, people spend about three and a half minutes on the city website looking for information. Um, they are also spent visiting about two and a half pages per session visit. So that's kind of on par with what we see with other communities and their websites. Um, so people are finding what they need and just a few clicks, which is really important to see. Um, but this time spent on the site is probably about a minute longer than what we see in a lot of places. Usually it's closer to two or two and a half minutes. Um, so us, this means that they are finding what they need, you know, they can find those pages within a couple of clicks, just a couple pages they visit. Um, but they are spending more time than average on the site as a whole, just trying to, I think, fully understand the information that's presented to them. We also have a couple of things that stood out regarding the Facebook account for the city. We know that. It is very effective and reaches a lot of people in the city of Newburgh. Um, but looking at the audience, it is kind of interesting that seventy-five percent of the audience is female. Um, so Facebook does skew a little bit more female, just in general, more females. Use Facebook as a platform and a tool to find information. Um, but this is probably a larger skew than we normally see. So it's just something interesting to keep in mind when we're thinking about the tone, the language, and even just the types of information that are posted on that account. Um, also looking at that Facebook audience, only three percent are Spanish speakers. We know that Spanish speakers make up a much larger population of the Newburgh community. Um, so we have, this kind of echoes back to just the idea that we need to start looking at other ways to reach. Um, the broader community besides just Facebook and other digital tools, because they're not on the on those platforms um and not part of our current audience. One final thing that I think stood out through that survey that Lacy mentioned earlier, you know, we really wanted to try and understand. How people currently get their communication information, both about the community at large and the city specifically, and how they'd like to get information moving forward. Um, there weren't too many things that stood out, but one thing that did was that a lot of people really did request. Some sort of city e-newsletter. People are are still using the Facebook and the website. Um, but I think email is always a great way to reach people as a city organization. We typically see really high open rates with our city e-newsletters, so people do rely on those kind of tools for communication. So that kind of covers some of the background research and items that we discovered through this process, so I'll let Kim talk a little bit more about how we're gonna take that and move forward.
It's been really interesting through this process. So uh again, a little bit about Slate, we kind of have this framework of how we go through communications plans. But what gets spit out, technical term on the other end, is is dependent upon what we learn. And one of the things we wanted to do for Newburgh, that's a little bit different than what we do in other places, is create these four areas of focus. And that's because um we felt like. All communication that Newburgh is creating almost needs to get run through a filter, right? What we want to do is create these processes that allow staff to look at the the projects, the messages, the communication that they want to do. And sort of do this, this gut check, if you will, against these four areas of focus. Because this is what felt like the most important and what could be most effective in helping. Create those stronger relationships with our community. When is this idea of building trust? Um, gosh, I heard talking, I heard the council talking about transparency today. We talked about how do we make things easier to understand? And I'll go into detail about each one of these in a little, a little bit more as we go through the presentation. But this idea of trust, accountability, and credibility, whatever buzzwords you want to throw out there, um, that's a high priority for it for Newburgh. The second one is consistency and timeliness. Um, you know, it's uh. It's funny how difficult this can be. In larger organizations, the idea of consistent messaging actually can be a challenge. We want to work towards how do we make sure that the message coming out of Dan's office is the same coming out of Lacy's office is the same coming out of Doug's office? Um, and and timeliness is critically important too. I I mean, gosh, if COVID taught us nothing, it taught us uh how to be a little bit faster. And more nimble in our communications, and those are things that we need to continue uh to improve upon and and run with. Uh, again, the idea of equity and inclusion, this we heard loud and clear from stakeholders, from staff, from the community. That we need to be really thoughtful about how we are messaging to all residents, not just the ones that are easy to get to. Um, and then this idea of internal confidence and competence, um, really talking about how do we. Empower staff to feel comfortable and ready to communicate with residents. And and let's just go through them. I know, um, we've been talking for a little while, but I do want to go through each one of these in a little bit more detail and share some examples. Um, this idea of building trust, uh again, I don't think it's new, but I I think there's some core things that we can do to help. Um, sort of peel away the the onion, if you will, and bring people on the inside of operations. So this is about sharing both good news and bad, um, sharing what we know and what we don't, right? So um, this is about making data available, but also understandable. Um, gosh, was it Counselor Findling, you were talking about the language around budgets? And how it took, you know, like a year just to learn all the acronyms and the terms and the. You know, how do we peel all of that away and make it into something understandable so that you don't have to necessarily go through a training every year, every two years, whatever. Cycle you decide to do, so that it is more intuitive and and just normal people like us can understand it. Um, this idea of the why around decisions, one of the things we do. Consistently for a lot of our clients is what we call just council wrap-ups. So I I mean, I'm always so very impressed how long you all can sit in a meeting and engage and talk and come and have really difficult. And important conversations, but man, wouldn't it be lovely as a resident if someone could just summarize what you talked about and what outcomes were decided? Right? How can we make everything a little bit more digestible? Help people understand the why of the decisions, you know, again, bring them into the fold of this of the discussions that we're having. I think this idea of inviting, using, and reporting upon community feedback is critical. Um, governments often will invite community feedback and use it, but forgot to share that they've done so. So making sure that we like close that feedback loop in all of the the engagement opportunities that we create. And then this idea of personal relationships, I mean, gosh, we've touched on a a lot, a lot here, but um. The more that we can sort of be a part of, capitalize upon the relationships and the networks and the. Um, the people that make this a really good organization, I think the more successful we'll be. With really helping people understand that this is about service and this is about customer service and about the people that are providing these, not just a big bureaucratic organization.
So for each of these kind of focus areas, you know, where they're fairly high level and there are some sample strategies there, but we're also trying to figure out how to. Um, you know, boil these down into tangible tactics. Kim mentioned a couple of council recaps and just other ways of reporting on your projects. Um, so each, for each of these focus areas, we have just one example of maybe it's something we've done for another client that could be easily translated into a Newburgh tactic as well. Um, so in this case, you know, we have what we call a budget brief. Um, you you have long, governments have long budget documents. I don't think many people read them, unfortunately. Um, so we like to create these documents as a way to um show a snapshot of how funds were. Um, how revenues were gathered, how they were spent, and then what those priorities are for kind of that budget year from the council. Um, again, just another way to share information quickly and be transparent. Another thing we've been talking about a lot with these focus areas of how to make them actionable. Is starting to think about what this means for staff. So again, communications is gonna be a team effort. It's not all on Lacy's shoulders. It's gonna be. Um, working with all sorts of the departments in the city to help get the word out about certain projects and initiatives. So in trying to create some sort of checklist or just things for employees to keep in mind. As they move forward with communications in these four focus areas, we have some sample questions here of what people should consider in their communications. So you know, does this reinforce the city's credibility, helping build that trust? Um, did we explain the reasoning behind behind a decision, especially one that might be a little bit complicated or controversial? How we translated how this will impact their daily lives? What difference will residents see with this project or decision? And then the final one is kind of around the under- understanding um what the content is. So we like to say that you should shoot for a sixth-grade reading level, so you know, double-check your work to make sure that. Um, it's at that reading level so that it is comprehensible.
We talked a little bit about consistency and timeliness before, but to dive a little bit deeper, um, there's a few core strategies that. We recommend uh knowing what Newburgh has ahead of them. And and part of this is the simple things like using the right tools for the right purpose. So if we know that three percent of our Facebook audience is Spanish-speaking, perhaps that's not the best tool to use. Um, when we're trying to reach our Spanish-speaking audience, um, but being thoughtful about those items. And the idea of predictably timed communication is. Oddly, people get into habits and they get into routines and they start to look for things, um, whether it be monthly. Newsletters, whether it be uh, you know, weekly reports from the city manager, whatever that might be, people do tend to get in a routine, and we like to sort of leverage that awareness. One of the important elements on this slide, though, that I want to talk about is just creating that clear and usable brand. So for Newburgh, we're not coming in here and telling you, you need to do a brand-new logo and a huge community marketing campaign. That's not at all. In fact, our recommendation, really what we're talking about is how do we make city services, staff, facilities, vehicles? How do we make those more recognizable and identifiable for Newburgh residents? So that they're fully aware of the breadth of services the city is providing. So that they know exactly where to go if they have a question, so that they know when they talk to that nice person. Um, you know, at the front counter, they they know clearly that was a city employee. So really, it's about uh clarity of purpose and helping your residents identify city services. Um, so again, this isn't a logo rebrand. This is more about just getting clear on what logo do we use? And how can we create some consistency within that visual? Um, which then, of course, then relates over to consistency and messaging when we talk about, are we using the same message from the top down, so to speak, or bottom up for that matter? Throughout the entire organization.
And kind of going along with Kim was just mentioning with brand consistency, this is just kind of a visual example of what that looks like for a city. So again, not trying to create a new logo or new colors, but just making sure that they're consistent across all materials, across all departments. And easy for staff to use too, you know, that's really important in any sort of brand rollout and brand assets, that it's something that. Um, we have templates available and ready for employees to easily pick up um and use in a presentation or whatever it is. Um, so this just illustrates everything from collateral and letterhead to vehicles and signage can help reinforce that brand identity. Um, building on that consistency and timeliness, you know, again, thinking about being in the shoes of your employees, these are the things they might try and think about. Of just, are we using the correct logo and fonts in our communication and any collateral putting out to the city? Like Kim mentioned of, you know, making sure we're using the right um communication vehicle to reach our desired audiences. And are those messages consistent across all of our platforms from a press release that maybe Lacy puts out? To uh social media message that is later used on a similar topic. And then very similar to maybe something that Kim mentioned a little earlier about how are we using community feedback? This relates to, um, you know, how often are we gonna report back on a project? How can we make sure we're checking in quarterly with the community, even if there's not a ton of progress, just to make sure that that's still in the works and that we haven't totally forgotten about this item?
The third key area of focus is the idea of equity and inclusion. And I think what's most important about this area is that there's both really big things we need to do. And then there's small things that we can do right away that can make a difference. Um, you know, the smaller things around representation matters, or are we using visuals that demonstrate all of our residents and not just a select few? Um, are we considering all of our audiences when developing communications? That's both according to language, that's ADA compliance, that's LGBTQI. That's all of our different audiences. Are we considering each and every one of those as we're starting to launch communication campaigns? But there's also some bigger recommendations in here, which is, you know, the big one is this allocate tangible resources to equity. You know, one of the things that we learned through our stakeholder conversations was that it's really important to. Um, be true, authentic partners and show up authentically, right? And you know, one of the 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 pieces of feedback we've received is you can't just have the city. Come to our different cultural groups and come to our different stakeholders and say, well, we have something to say now, so can you help us get it out? Because that would be really helpful, right? It it, there has to be shared priorities and there has to be shared purpose. There has to be a true, authentic partnership. And that takes time, right? That takes time and effort and energy. And we've talked to Dan and Lacy about this, understanding that this isn't perhaps a strategy that happens overnight. Um, and in fact, probably this communications plan, this framework we're putting together is the first step. To creating a true communications and engagement and outreach program. But it would be silly, or it would be, um, we'd be remiss not to mention that a true allocation of resources should be in that long-term plan. And then I think just the the final piece of it is, you know. Uh, an acknowledgement of the role that communications will play as the city starts to formalize some of those DEI efforts. And really wanting to make sure that we save space for that.
So like Kim mentioned, there's a lot of work to be done in this area, but what are some things we can start doing fairly quickly? Um, to work towards that larger goal, what's the low-hanging fruit we can start to accomplish soon? Um, so one of them, like she said, is kind of representative photos. How do we make sure our photo library and the assets we're using in communication and collateral? Truly reflect the Newburgh community, um, so showing diversity and all the different cultures in Newburgh in our communications can be very valuable. Another piece that um is important to think about in this shorter term is just how are we translating materials? You know, how has that worked into the process to make sure that. Um, both English and Spanish versions of information are released at the same time, so there's no difference between those two. Um, just in this example, this is some collateral we put together for that resident survey that we put out for this communications plan. And just trying to make sure that we offer the survey in both English and Spanish and having the the Spanish language in the promotional items too. Um, again, it's a small use of resources. It is an added step and an important one to make sure that it reaches as many people as possible. Along those same lines, just some, again, more things for staff to keep in mind to achieve some of those small steps to make a greater impact. Again, around releasing translated materials as soon as you can with the English versions. Um, do your visuals represent the population of Newburgh? Um, you know, in your communication planning process, did you take into account those various groups that you want to try and reach? And then allocate resources or whatever is needed to make those tools happen? And ensure that we're, you know, going beyond the digital tools to make sure we're reaching the needed needed audiences.
And then our final area of focus is the internal confidence and competence. And this is so critically important, particularly as we started this conversation to say that, you know, Lacy is a currently a department of one. And we really need to figure out how do we, um, you know, build the case for why communications matters? Why engagement matters for the Newburgh city organization? And then how do we give people the tools to go out and be successful in that space? Um, this idea of communications processes is, you know, yes, about flow charts. Who doesn't love a good flow chart? But it's more so about, are we clear about roles and responsibilities? Um, are we clear about expectations? What expectations do we have? Um, from Lacy's department compared to other departments? And how are we all going to work together to make sure that we're successful? I think the other piece of this that's really important is this idea of, um. You know, how do we support and nurture employees and that point of pride? I stepped in earlier because I got all excited, because I really do think it's awesome how, um, how much pride people take in the. How how much pride people take in the work that they do? And they're, you know, they call it, they call it the public sector. They call it public service for a reason. And because all of the programs that we have here at the city of Newburgh are truly making the community a better place. So how do we nurture that sense of pride? How do we nurture that sense of community? How do we highlight some of the people and the impact that they've had? On this community so that we can celebrate that and again, tie that back to city services. And the other pieces on here are equally as important where, you know, we're not only defining roles and responsibilities for internal staff. But there's a ton of partner organizations that are really willing to work together. You know, what we just need to make sure is that we're all. I can't think of the right cliche, swimming in our same lane, driving in our same lane. That we're all heading in the right direction, but we're not duplicating efforts. We're not stepping on each other's toes, but we're truly working together. And I think the the core piece of this is really about, and Liz will share some examples here. What are the tangible tools and training we can provide to give staff? The resources they need to feel confident with their interactions?
Yeah. So going along with what Kim mentioned, you know, one thing we've done for cities in the past is create a kind of communication specific internet. And this is just one option or one tool that could be available to staff to have at their fingertips, just having the assets they need. But this is a tool that can help guide them through that communications process. Both, you know, making sure we have the right logos and fonts available. And then also, when you are creating communications, are you thinking about the various audiences you want to reach? And then guiding them through that process of what tools are you going to use to reach those audiences? So it really is kind of a compact toolkit that they can use. You know, should they have something they can do outside of Lacy's overview? You can mention fun flow charts. So here's an example of one of those. But it is a big step for Newburgh, the city, to create some of those communication processes and just establish some of those roles and responsibilities. You know, how does, how do different departments work with Lacy? When is she a consultant to them? And when is she implementing different practices related to their initiatives? And then who is doing that final quality control before things go out to the residents of Newburgh? You know, along those same lines, just some, a little checklist for employees to keep in mind during these processes. So, you know, have they collaborated with Lacy or others in her communications department? Is their information easy for other departments to find? You know, should a frontline worker in another department get a? Call that maybe is not necessarily about their department, but maybe. The information is somewhere they can have accessible to them, at least give them a general answer. If if there is a project going on that might affect another department, how do we make sure that that collaboration is happening? And sharing it information so they are on the same page going forward? And then finally, did they review all the other checklists? So if we're trying to achieve all of these four focus areas with our efforts, I'm just cross referencing that. Work has been done and things have been considered in all the different areas that we're really trying to sell here.
Hey Liz, before we move on from the internal, wait, yeah, sorry, move on from the internal piece. I I also think it's important to point out, particularly if their staff listening to today. The the intention of this is not to. Have so much rigor and so much process and so much change that it is difficult, right? The intention is actually to make this easier for everybody and to make this more successful for everybody. So I know sometimes when, especially when you have consultants come in and we say, well, hey, this is what we found out. And this is what we learned and this is what we recommend. It can be a little much, right? And so I I guess I just want to make sure that we say out loud that we acknowledge that. These processes need to work for everybody and we're going to work really hard to do that. And at the end of the day, the intention is for people to feel like they have the tools and the training they need to communicate. And if they feel like they need an additional assistance, they have a competent and well equipped communications. Community engagement specialist who can help them. And so I think that's our internal goal, sort of in a nutshell, that I think is just probably important to reiterate.
So that kind of finishes up kind of our four focus areas and some tangible strategies for each of them. So what happens next? You know, our goal tonight is really to get feedback on what you've heard so far to make sure. That this framework and these focus areas resonate with you before we move forward with building out the rest of the plan. After tonight's meeting, we'll be regrouping with Lacy and other team members. To figure out what those priorities look like going forward and what resources are available for, just help plan with that implementation process. To make it a real practical plan in the future. And then finally, we'll be doing the final build out of the various tactics, the overall plan and toolkit. You know, into next year with the goal of being able to implement this next year and into 2022. So having that two year plan, that's evaluated every six months or so to make sure we're on the right track. I also wanted to point out just a couple, kind of the final takeaways of, you know, we have a lot of more work to do to figure out our main priorities to move forward with. But right now, we're kind of anticipating that these are the areas we'll be focusing on. A lot of it is around building that internal foundation that Kim has been talking about as far as communication processes. Go to help establish those roles and responsibilities. So you know, what can we put in place to help ignite that communications, both with Lacy's department and across the organization? How can we make sure we have city guidelines, city brand guidelines that are usable for everybody to roll out in an efficient way? What other tools and assets can we start providing for staff to have communication and information at their fingertips? And then the final one is starting to take steps in that DEI focus area just by starting to identify audiences and the strategy you want to use to try and. Reach, reach them and build connections with these populations. So I know we went through a lot tonight, but that concludes kind of everything that we've heard so far that we wanted to share with you in our discovery report with the communications plan. So we're happy to answer questions and hope to get some feedback on what you've heard so far.
All right, folks. Well, there you go. Questions or comments and Liz and Kim, thank you so much. Hopefully it's not too late for you all.
Mayor, I've had like four cups of coffee. I am ready for questions. Do not worry.
All right. So questions, here we go, folks. Let me see the blue hands. Let's go. All right, Stephanie's reaching, or was that Denise? Okay, there's Stephanie. There we go.
I just want to say this is really exciting and I feel like this really kind of gets to you. When we discussed our goals about how to be better. Have better service within the departments and inside of the city in order to to bring that out to our community. So this is really exciting because it feels like it touches a lot on the internal stuff as well as the external stuff. And I think that's kind of something that we've lacked in the in the past is. We've wanted to provide good customer service to our community, but we haven't really practiced good customer service within. Within side of our, between our departments and that kind of thing. So this is really exciting and I'm, I'm excited about this because I think. Hopefully this will help departments sort of feel like one cohesive entity and not a whole bunch of different. People doing different things in different places. So I like this a lot.
All right, anyone else? Elise?
Oh my gosh, I couldn't get off me. I'm super excited about this. I love everything Lacy touches, so. Really excited. I totally believe that messaging creates a culture, so. Really excited to see where this is going and I really appreciate the attention to council goals and what we care about and. Hopefully what our community cares about too. But this is a ton of work and I'm super impressed and really excited to be a part of this going forward. So hats off. Nice job, Lacy.
All right, anyone else? All right, you know, I just, the only, I guess, the only question I have is, is, you know, we talked about staff, but what about us electeds? I mean, we communicate. I'm sure we could use some teaching, some instruction. So I just throw that out there as to, you know, when you might want to coach us up a little bit.
I feel like I should defer to Dan on that one, but I will say I envision you being in my roles and responsibilities. At at some point, because I, I 100% agree. You are more. Much of the time, all of the time, most of the time, that forward facing literal face of the organization. And we want you to feel equipped and prepared too. And so we're going to do some brainstorming and those tools and tactics around what do you need? And Lacy, watch me volunteer you because you've handled this so well so far. If you have specific needs that you really think would be helpful, I would say, share those with Lacy and Dan. And we will make sure to integrate that into the plan. And it's a great point, Mayor, and we probably didn't hit on it enough tonight.
Yeah, you know, the only thing is that, you know, with staff, not all staff lives in town. But all of us electeds, we live here. So, so we may hear things that the staff may not. So. But thank you. Thanks very much. All right, anybody else, anything else? Now, Lacy's already, Lacy's already kept me from making a total fool of myself regularly. So that's, that's, that's part of her job description. So there you go. But otherwise, thank you all. Thank you very much. And well, I guess we'll wait to hear the next installment of the plan and all and. And thank you and hopefully you can get to sleep after all that coffee.
No problem. Thanks for having us.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. All right, it looks like next on the agenda is. Okay, before, before we get there, we've got council committee reports. Anybody have anything to report out? Not hearing anything. All right, let's move along. So we're on to committee discussion.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I ask a question? Rick, would you be willing, I'm going to ask for help. Would you be willing to stand in for me at Visit Newburgh until I can get my head on straight? So that I.
Consider it done and just, yeah, and any, if there's others, let us know. If there's other stuff, just let us know, but happy to do it. Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, not seeing anything else. You know, mate Sue, maybe could I make this suggestion before we get into the committee discussion too deeply? Can we get Colin on first and and see if he's, because I know he's been waiting patiently.
I I know, and he joined during work session too, so.
I know he did. I saw him. Good for you.
But let me introduce this topic. I'll introduce him. So this analysis, this is just a summary slide. You have all of the analysis in your packet. This is probably going to take more than one session. So the impetus for this was Colin. Colin, for those of you who don't know Colin, he is our student commissioner on the planning commission. And has been on for two years. He in October wrote a proposal to the council to amend the requirements for committees and have a youth representative on each committee. He noticed that some did and some did not. I have been here six and a half years. I did not notice that. So Colin and I have been working together. Because I had talked to Dan since he began about improving the committee system. So since from 1936 to the present. We've just sort of created committees here and there and not an overall comprehensive approach. So I went through all of the standing committees and looked at the rules of how we create them. And came up with just this summary of things that we might like to bring back to you for further discussion in February. This is just, here you go. Chew on that for the holidays. Well, I know it's, it's a small gift, but it's still a gift. However, Colin has his own presentation. He worked with city staff a week ago. And presented to Doug and Will, and I want to thank those staff liaisons for stepping in. Colin is one of 92 committee volunteers here at the city, 99 count the council. Thank you for your service. And so now I will bring up his PowerPoint and Colin, are you ready to go?
I am.
Okay.
All right, Colin, before you get started, the burning question is where are you going to college, my friend?
It's still application season, I'm afraid.
Is it?
Yeah.
You got to keep us posted. That's, that is burning news. We want to know.
I will. I I will put that on the top of my to do list.
There you go. Thank you.
You'll be the first to know.
Right on. Well, aside from your parents, but yeah.
Well, hey, priorities, eh?
That's right.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. I would like to thank Sue and Doug and Will. For meeting with me and Sue especially for helping me to put this together. So as you all know, from the packet I sent you in October. I am presenting on adding student commission, more student commission positions to existing and future municipal committees. I sort of prefaced this, this idea began in my head around March or April. When an email was sent out to current volunteers. Asking to spread the word to fill the student positions for the traffic safety and historic preservation commission. I knew at that time that those positions had not been filled for some months. And so I realized that there were likely some inefficiencies in the way that we recruit volunteers. That could be fixed and which could improve student positions on the existing committees. Having thought about that, I realized that we could expand the current number of student positions. If we have those increased resources and relationships. So really, the dominating question behind this proposal is, Sue, next slide, please. Thank you. Really, the dominating question behind this proposal is how do we increase student civic participation in the community? In a meaningful and long lasting way while conserving and efficiently using existing resources? We want to give students more opportunities while not breaking the city's wallet, of course. Sue, next slide, please. So how do we do this? We do, there, there are two parts to this, one of which is we have to increase the amount of opportunities available to students. That has a legislative and an administrative component. And then we also have to ensure that those opportunities are seized upon. That has, that's just an administrative component that deals with city staff. So Sue, next slide, please. So in terms of increasing opportunities available to students, the legislative component entails the passage of some amount of legislation by the city council. In the proposal I submitted to you in October, I did, I proposed that that would be done in three ways. One piece of legislation would be an ordinance to address the memberships of the library board. And the citizens rate review committee, which are established in Newburgh municipal code. The second of which would be a resolution which deals with the membership of the affordable housing committee. And the existing ad hoc committees. And then the third of which would be another resolution which establishes that all future committees established by action of the city council. Have a, have an ex officio non voting student position available on them. So assuming that if those pieces of legislation are passed. Ways that the ways that the increased amount of opportunities would be handled administratively. Would mainly be in the form of applications. Who do we offer the applications to? I can tell from, I can tell you all from my personal experience. That as a 14, 15 year old freshman or sophomore, I would not have been able to sufficiently contribute to the planning commission, for example. So really administratively, we would be dealing with rising juniors and seniors, that is. To clarify, student position, student terms last from June 1st to May 31st in the succeeding year. So if a student is going to be a junior. In the September following the beginning of the June 1st term, as awkward as that is worded. That they would be qualified to submit an application. Sue, next slide, please. So then, assuming we do add these positions, we have the, we have the logistical question, which is, do we have a sufficient number of applicants to fill the new positions? I know that at the school district. There are a number of, there are a couple of open positions on the school board for students. I also know that in the past, we have had difficulties obtaining student volunteers. So that could be very well attributed to a lack of maturity by high school students specifically, who tend overwhelmingly to apply to these positions. However, I think it would be more accurate to state that there, that the deficiencies we're experiencing are due to, there are two primary reasons. One of which is that we're not getting a sufficient, a pool of sufficiently interested candidates. We are not drawing in candidates who have a personal vested interest in either participating civically. Or in the goals of the committees that they are volunteering with. And second of all, there is an issue of lacking disciplinary mechanism for absentee volunteers. For the library board, for example, which I know off the top of my head. A member has to be absent for three consecutive meetings. Before the chair of the library board contacts the mayor and the mayor takes it up at the city council to dismiss a volunteer. So that leaves what is likely a three and a half to. So that, uh, leaves what is likely a three and a half to four-month period in which a member could be absent from their committee uh, with no repercussions. And even under, even with that system, um, there are a number of inefficiencies that could be addressed. So Sue, next slide, please. Oh, actually, hold on a second. Hi, I skipped, skipped one point. So, uh, taking those two reasons into account, uh, specifically on the number of applicants that we have to student positions, uh, I would attribute that primarily to the sufficiently interested candidate's reason, which is to say that we are not, uh, we as a city are not communicating, uh, enough and well enough with, uh, our pool of high school applicants or college applicants to fill the positions. So, uh, taking a, uh, I, earlier this week, I emailed and asked for uh, membership information from a few student organizations, leadership and representation based at the high school. Um, I asked for the number of junior and senior, uh, the number of junior and senior members in those groups. Um, it added up to about sixty-seven. So assuming that fifty percent of those, uh, members are, uh, willing and are eager to apply for the associate positions, uh, that is thirty-three students, which would be willing to apply to a position anytime it come up, anytime it comes up. Um, given that as of the end of this month, there will only be eight extra positions added if, uh, under my, under the proposal, um, uh, there are more than enough candidates if the proposal is passed. So now, Sue, next slide, please. So then, uh, once the positions are filled, if the positions are filled, but once they are, uh, how do we, how exactly, what are the means through which we ensure that those positions are filled? Um, well, we have to develop relationships between city staff and between the student organizations. So at the high school, that would entail the ASB, Associated Student Body, National Honor Society, uh, MECA and GSA. At George Fox, that would entail, uh, building relationships between staff and ASC, the Black Student Union, Latinx Heritage Club and other such groups. Uh, the criteria I established in, uh, my proposal was either representation or leadership-based organizations. Um, these, uh, student groups fit those requirements. And then additionally, in the, uh, actions to ensure student positions remain filled and are filled, um, we also have going over applications again. So, uh, revising committee goals to be more specific to what the council, uh, wants from the committees, um, so that we can get more specified, more specifically interested candidates. Um, revising application procedures so that, uh, for instance, applications are specific to the committees they deal with. Uh, increasing, uh, revising the disciplinary mechanism for absentee volunteers. These would all be steps that would have to be taken to ensure that we are able to, um, acquire a qualified and a interested and committed group of applicants and then, uh, make sure that we are able to maintain those applicants. Uh, Sue, next slide, please. So, uh, now we get into cost benefit analysis. Uh, cost to stakeholders, uh, so to the city specifically, there are short and long-term labor costs. Establishing relationships between staff and student organizations, uh, will take time and effort from staff. Um, however, that, uh, the, the amount of labor and time required would be highest at the front end. So as those relationships are established, uh, they would enter into what I would call a maintenance phase, where really it's just a matter of communicating, uh, between staff and student groups, uh, when positions become available. And then a potential cost that arises in the future, uh, have to do with future tech investments. So on the graphic on the right, you can see that, uh, there are seventy-four current volunteers, uh, who, uh, there are seventy-four current, at the end of December, actually. As of right now, there are ninety-two, but given the, uh, just, given the dissolution of two ad hoc committees, that number will decrease to seventy-four, excluding the city council. There are seventy-four, uh, volunteers at the city. Um, only the planning commission has iPads, styluses, uh, technology such as that. If we are to adopt, uh, this proposal, then that number will increase to eighty. And so that, uh, that, that, uh, increase of six volunteers corresponds to an eight percent increase in volunteers and thus an eight percent increase in the future cost of tech investments in iPads and styluses, uh, for example. Uh, to students, costs would be minimal. However, there would be, of course, increased responsibilities and time demands. Um, given that this is, uh, a civic, uh, a civic role in any sense of the word, um, that is to be expected. And so that cost really is negligible. Sue, next slide, please. Thank you. Hmm, excuse me. Thank you. Um, so benefits to the city, uh, and of course, include increased student participation and broader base of input. Um, any municipal government or any government period should aim to, uh, draw input and, uh, consent in the original form from as broad of a group of its residents as possible. Um, and this, this proposal, uh, meets that desire. Then we have greater development of future civic participants and leaders. So if we give the students real-world civic experience, as is shown in the benefits students column, um, we are equipping them with the experience and, uh, some of the knowledge necessary to participate and lead in the, not only in the Newburgh community presently and in the future, but wherever those students may go. Um, the long-term effects of having these, uh, qualified and committed civic participants, um, while not material, are necessarily, um, good for the long-term health of, of, of a democratic society. So then going into benefits for students, I already covered real-world civic experience. Uh, we also have the topic of college applications and resumes. Um, showing that you have, uh, participated materially in the direction of your community and in, uh, municipal government, um, shows that you have initiative and commitment to those areas of, uh, participation, which of course, uh, bodes well for one's college applications, as I am discovering. Um, so just to summarize the costs and benefits, we have, uh, benefits to the city are not necessarily material or financial. However, the, the increased diversity of voices that the city will receive, um, and that guides its directions uh, will be key to the, uh, future of productive, uh, productive citizens, productive residents of the community. These are the, these are the sort of immaterial, but nonetheless valuable benefits that the city would gain and the students would gain as well. Sue, next slide, please. So then the effect on council goals, um, customer service and ongoing legal disputes would not be, uh, are not applicable. Um, diversity, equity, inclusion are however applicable, uh, are however applicable, excuse me. Um, adding voices that are diverse in age and ethnicity will meet the goal. So, uh, if, uh, as I proposed in the, uh, building relationships part of my presentation, um, reaching out to student organizations such as MECA, such as GSA, uh, and the Black Student Unit at George Fox, that will increase the diversity of, of backgrounds that the city is receiving, um, contributing to its direction. It also should be remembered that, uh, the difference in age that will be had, uh, that will be contributed by student volunteers also contributes to the diversity and inclusion that the city provides to its residents. Housing affordability, uh, is not, uh, applicable, nor is Urban Renewal Plan's authority. Uh, sustainability is not, uh, materially applicable. However, uh, I would argue that, um, providing positions to students contributes to the long-term sustainability of human engagement in our community and beyond. Um, so the primary effects of this proposal would be on council goal two. However, count, uh, council goal five, one could also make an argument for. Sue, next slide, please. Uh, so in summary, um, the proposal would benefit the short and long-term function of the city systems and municipal committees. Um, there would be some upfront costs, uh, in terms of staff labor and time. However, as I mentioned before, those would diminish as those relationships are, uh, established and as they become the norm. I would argue that, uh, having these relationships should be the norm, in fact, as they are necessary to ensuring that positions, not, uh, not only student positions, but positions of all volunteers are uh, effectively filled and maintained with qualified and committed candidates. Um, local high school and university students benefit from increased opportunities. Um, going back to, uh, as I stated previously, um, having that real-world experience and knowledge is valuable, not only in civic, uh, civic jobs, uh, but in general, being a good citizen. Um, and then lastly, the proposal requires the adoption of new, uh, just to summarize, the proposal requires the adoption of new legislation and, and from the city council and for the city council to direct staff to begin developing, uh, those relationships with leaders of student organizations. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I would allow, uh, be happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, awesome. Uh, let's see. Denise, do you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, first, thank you, Colin, and thank you for your service. And I just have always enjoyed working with you. Um, you forgot, you forgot Key Club for Qantas and Interact for Rotary. I've been able to fill two different positions using, using that platform. And then I, I have to say, work, I work with, um, Interact, I work with the watershed group and Tiger Manufacturing through the years. These are some brilliant humans that I learn from every single day. I meet with the Interact Club every week. They are, they, they change me. And they're gonna change the world. And, and I agree with you that we need to have those voices. Um, we have to make the opportunity available. We have to reach out and use their methods of communication to reach out. Um, and I just, I'm, I'm very thankful that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone, anyone else? All right, anybody? All right, Colin, um, that was fantastic. Great presentation, but I've come to not expect less, actually, to be honest. So, um, a, a couple of questions. So, um, in, in thinking about, uh, students at Fox, at PCC, at Newburgh, Newburgh High, the, the private schools, did you give any thoughts to mix of students, what you'd like to see?
Um, I have not, but I'm, I'm happy you've brought that up. That is certainly an important area that we will have to consider as we uh, go further into the nuts and bolts of this proposal. Um, given that, um, the students at the universities tend, uh, to be from outside communities, I would prefer that the, uh, personally, I prefer that the majority of students come from the high school so that we are developing more of those students who are contained within our community. Um, the exact proportion, which I believe is what you're, uh, hinting at, uh, I couldn't put a number on that right at this moment, but that would be something that, uh, city council, staff and anybody involved would have to, uh, discuss and negotiate as we move forward.
Um, next, or next question. So, you know, you mentioned the benefit to the students and, you know, obviously, college applications and that. And, and I wonder if you've given any thought to, are there more formal benefits that we could do, whether it's uh, standard letter, letters of recommendation, uh, if it's a, a, I don't know, student of the, you know, student member of the year or something like that. Um, and, and, and something to flesh it out a little bit more for the students. Have you given that any thought?
Um, I like your idea of student member of the year, because that accomplishes two things. That, uh, does provide a benefit, uh, material benefit in the form of that award. However, it also provides an incentive, uh, to keep students participating and engaged. I have not given thought to increasing material benefits because I have been trying to balance the current, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say financial situation of the city, but the, the, the ability of the city to take on more volunteers. That is, especially with the pandemic and with decreased, uh, tax revenues, that I believe is a, is a source of difficulty for the city. Um, however, something small such as that, um, would be of benefit not only to the students, but of to the, uh, but to the health of the program generally. Um, so that specific idea is, uh, is a good one and, uh, developing uh, material benefits that are cost efficient would be something, uh, another thing that we would have to look into developing.
I had one thought on that, maybe even working with, uh, Mr. Russo to develop some sort of extra credit in his government classes or something, because what, what better learning environment than the real, the real thing?
The other thing that I, that I would like and, and, you know, blessings on all the college-bound kids, but not all of them are, not everybody is. I'd also like to find a way to attract kids that may not be college-bound, but they could be living in Newburgh forever. Um, so that would be another thing that I'd, I'd like to think about. Um, the only other comment I've got is, you know, I thank you for mentioning the council goals. I, it, I'm always delighted when we hear about the council goals. Um, but the other thing is, one, I would argue, I would believe that this is customer service. Because you are our customers. You are as much our customers as anyone else. And just because you don't pay taxes yet, you're still our customers. So, anyway. Anybody else? Any other comments?
Uh, hi, Rick. Uh, so I think, uh, first of all, Colin, thank you for such a great presentation and putting all this together. And I really like you doing your research on, on some of like the, uh, smaller, um, groups within the high school. I think one suggestion would be like, and I don't know what the possibility of this is, but having some sort of like small stipend for, um, the students participating in this, because typically, I think like Rick, you mentioned, um, a lot of folks who are gonna use these opportunities are gonna be the ones that are college-bound or that have the time and privilege to do the, you join these kind of, um, like committees, such as like even council. But I think being able to give something to the students who are gonna be given as their input, their knowledge, their experience is worthwhile, even if it's a small stipend. But some of them, it's like, um, either you take a job or you participate in a city council on the, um, group. So that's just a thought.
Let's see, uh, Stephanie.
Rick kind of touched on this, but my question was around how to engage students who aren't college-bound um, or who may be taking a gap year or just are otherwise not looking for something for, necessarily for a college application, but maybe some real-world experience, um, and some connections within the city that might lead them to some kind of employment. And so I'd like to hear your thoughts. Um, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but some thoughts on how to engage students who um, aren't necessarily seen as leaders, um, and aren't necessarily seen as college-bound, um, kids, but are, might have some skill set that they could bring to the table that wouldn't necessarily come from those kids that are college-bound. So, um, you know, I'd, I'd be interested to hear a little more about how to engage those students.
Uh, I have two thoughts which come to mind. Uh, the first of which comes from the communication portion of this. So, in communicating with the, the high school, for example, um, I, I wrote this in my, uh, advocacy letter, uh, however, I didn't include it in my presentation. Um, I, I think it would be necessary not only to communicate with student groups, but to, uh, distribute the message that there are positions available, um, to the school more broadly. Um, the assistant principal at, uh, Newburgh High School is, uh, one's named Mark Brown. He, uh, he's in charge of these weekly newsletter. Um, distributing the message through that, uh, medium would be a way to reach a broader group of students. And then also, as Denise suggested, um, going into, uh, say, Tiger Manufacturing, um, that would be another way to, uh, attract students who perhaps are going more towards a trade, uh, career path. And then the second idea I have, um, in relation to actual positions with the city is that, um, and again, I'm, I'm trying very, uh, I'm trying very hard not to take more of the staff's time than is necessary and the, the resources that are necessary. However, if we are to, uh, reach students who are not necessarily college-bound and more looking for uh, career technical experience and education, um, something closer to an internship would be valuable. Um, and providing that, uh, to students, uh, and, and connecting students with city staff more um, individually would be a way to accomplish that. Uh, we're also getting into Denise's proposal of, uh, providing extra credit to government and civic students. Um, so uniting those ideas together, um, both in broadening the way we communicate our, and the way we communicate our message and in providing different types of opportunities, if possible, given the resources of the city and of staff. Um, those would be good ways to include a broader range of students, especially along socioeconomic or career path grounds.
Awesome. All right, anyone else? All right, you know what? I'd, I'd like to, actually on this, I'd like to make a suggestion, if I might, and see what y'all think. I, um, you know, Sue mentioned the idea of coming back in February. I'd like to, I'd like to see this as a work session item. Uh, because I think, you know, not only do we have Colin's suggestion on student representation, I think we could also touch on volunteer appreciation. I think we could talk on staff support as well. And then again, how do we get the word out? And this comes back to the communication plan with the. the schools in town and how we recruit generally. I think it's, it's a, you know, with ninety nine volunteers. You know, again, volunteer, volunteer management is something that's near and dear to my heart. So I think it's, it's something that I'd like that. So I don't know. What do you all think? A work session on the subject? Okay, I think you got thumbs up. All right, cool.
Just, just to let you know, and the community know, because we're recording this and some people do watch it. We had laid out seven challenges and we laid out ten ideas. And tonight, we really just addressed one of those ideas. So I'm going to get a hold of Colin after this and the staff liaisons for the committees. And we'll have a follow up and talk about an action plan. But I did want to ask my boss. His name might also put on the staff. If he would like to say anything.
I guess a few things. I mean, I love calling you. You have an internship anytime you want. You know, I think you'll be replacing me quickly soon. But also want to make sure, as Sue pointed out, that some of the other ideas are touched on at some point, and whether it's at the work session in the future or now or at another point. But because I think that what we're attempting to do is also encourage more participation. And I think volunteer management is is an apt way to do that, you know, to to make sure that we respect and encourage a broad range of volunteers. And also some of the ways that we're, we might have proposed in the item to standardize some things would be I think would be helpful to the overall process and are, and they're completely not sexy things. And and yet I think could make staff staff's lives easier in managing the various committees and commitments that we all have. And I think just that inherently will breed a better volunteer experience if, you know, everything it makes. You know, if it's clear where do you apply, what you get when you show up, you know, what your materials are, what the run of show for the committee is and you know, that we're then recognizing in a standard way. And you know, recruiting is not the headache that I think it might be for mayor, at least. You know, that there are other ways to to share that load. I think those are all good things hopefully as well. And I think that Colin's, his presentation is is great. And especially because he put the thing together himself, shows that we have passionate people in the community who do want to volunteer for us. And that we can, I think, take the sort of that microcosm of his experience and his focus on students, which I think is is something we should think about from a social sustainability perspective, you know, that we are building our future council members and community leaders, but also just trying to think about how do we expand that to everybody? So anyway, I'm happy to push off on the rest of the item, but hopefully we can kind of include some of those suggestions in that work session.
If I might, I would also like to voice my support for the challenges and ideas Sue presented in her request for council action. No one development or improvement is made in a vacuum. So improving the general system of volunteering would benefit the system, the student portion of it, improving the student portion of it would benefit the general system.
Well said, very well said. Yes. And I think, you know, all in all, and you know, on this notion, I mean, as it works now, and you may, may or may not know, I mean, it basically Sue gets a bunch of applications. We look through them, we recruit. And then it's like, pick this person. And you know, at some point, there may be a means or a desire to make that more of a committee selection and then just you know, one person or two people. So that would be something as well that we could, we could discuss and I'd be happy to to do that.
I think just to add to the, we're just talking about committees and obviously volunteering is such a bigger thing in terms of giving to the community and giving to the city organization and that sort of thing. So just being able to expand how, how we, how we recruit volunteers, what jobs we give them, what roles, what, how we manage them goes well beyond the committee structure too. So, you know, just being able to think in the, in a few years, maybe we're successful to the point where we've got a bunch of people who are really committed, who are able to, you know, as a class or you know, as a, as a group are willing to contribute. And we've got, you know, volunteers for projects too, not just for boards and commissions.
Absolutely. All right. Well, great. Again, Colin, thank you. Thank you so very much. Good luck. Keep us posted. One other question. What do you want to study in school?
That is a sore subject, both within my own head and within my, within my social group, if that's the kind way to put it. I have no clue and I don't know if I will have a clue for many years. So.
So you're hopefully thinking liberal arts colleges, colleges and universities with broad arrays of offerings?
I certainly want to do something that's cross disciplinary. Whatever that is, I'm hoping the future will guide me.
Have you thought city management?
In regard to city manager Reinheimer's comment, no, but I may have to look into it. And Mayor Rogers, I'm afraid I didn't hear your comment. Could you repeat that?
No, I was going to make a plug for my alma mater. If you have any desire to go to Boston, just let me know.
I have considered that university, actually.
No, there you go. See, yeah. I don't do it anymore. I used to do interviews for applying students, but I don't do it anymore. So.
Don't you know it? Just my luck.
I know, right? I know. I would have to accuse myself anyway, because.
That's fair. Yeah.
All right, cool. Well, Colin, thank you. And thank you for hanging out with us all the way through the work session until now. So thank you. Thanks so much. All right. Let's see, what else I got? So we've had a couple of different discussions about SDCs and and that kind of thing. I, I would love it if we could look into the idea of an SDC slash capital improvement project commission. And whether or not that was something that we could do. Anybody else think that that might be something of interest?
Could we talk about what the focus would be?
Yeah, my, for me, it would be, I'd like to know, I'd like to know how the SDCs are calculated. I would like to know how the lists of each master plan comes to be and how that contributes to the actual cost of the SDC. And you know, and I'd just like to see that because I think, again, the basic question being what does a million dollar in SDC project or does capital improvement project, what does that mean to SDCs? And and look at it that way, sort of, and maybe get some community input on that subject. So.
I ditto you, Rick. This is Denise.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else? Yeah, I got a nod, Elise or Jules. Yeah, okay. All right, that would be, that would be great.
We ask about timeframe.
Oh, yeah, you know, any, you know, whenever, you know, whenever you feel that it can be worked in. But it just, and the reason is, it does seem to be a point of discussion in the business slash development community.
Sure.
Okay. All right, cool. All right, anything else, folks?
I have one more thing that it it goes back to when we were talking about the budget, but we started to talk about transparency. And in, I didn't want to go down that rabbit hole because we should have been focused on the budget thing. And so I thought I'd save it for now. But it's really quick. I actually have no problem with the transparency of how how that COVID money was given away. And I'll tell you why. I, I am actually super impressed with the speed in which changes happened. Now, if you look at our federal government who have left millions and billions of people starving to death because they're arguing over bits and pieces in that whole debacle. I am so glad that we did not go down that path. When there was need, we fulfilled it. As far as the position at the seat, that position was in the city budget, we just didn't have money for it. So here was a way, the, the economic development, there was, there was already a position in there. I believe I'm correct. I don't. It was like an empty holder.
It was contemplated in Neds, but I think in the future years.
So I mean, we had the opportunity and someone else was paying for it and no one needed help more than our business community. So I appreciate that we moved quickly and I appreciated that everything didn't take two months to get out the door. Actually, money was going out the door before there was even COVID money involved. And to me, that really meant something. I'm seeing, you know, I just see it too much where we, you know, everything's a yes, or there are unintended consequences sometimes, yes. But this is not city budget, budget money. It was emergency, get the money out the door money. And I appreciate how it was done. I just wanted to be clear about that. The transparency thing, if it was our regular budget, I, you know, absolutely, I agree. Absolutely. I want to know every detail, but and I want to know, and I want to have plenty of time to look at it. This, this to me was the best for the people who live in Newburgh. That's all I have.
Just, I guess, to clarify on that, I think you probably see that when it comes to the spending of money, I'm gonna be a stickler. I'm just going to. And and it may verge on being a pain in the posterior and I apologize. But I think we owe it to present things in the most detailed, clear and concise method that we can. And I, I just believe that that will save a lot of these headaches. So that's, that's my opinion. And I think we all just can, can work to to do it. You know, better as we go forward, I guess. And I'll just leave it at that. So. All right. The other thing I do have one other thing on communication since we, that was a subject tonight too. And I'm gonna, Dan and I will have to talk about how to do this, but from the, from the November sixteenth meeting, I had a bunch of questions. And I, thanks to Chief Cosmic, he did get back the next day to answer one of those questions. The others, I haven't heard back yet. And so I'm not sure how exactly to follow up on that. But again, I just want to say that we, again, are the elected officials that are asking staff information that we have questions on, and I'd imagine the public does as well. So I just, I think that is a part of our role. And I will, you know, I will continue to ask those questions. So so there it is. But we'll get back on those questions on November sixteenth. Anything else, folks? All right, we've got LOC elected essentials reminder for 2020. So if you have not done that, then that's something to get on your calendars. Anything else? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And we will see you all. Do be careful out there, please, here during the holiday season, right? And Bryce, if you're listening, let us know how you're doing, my friend. And otherwise, everybody, have a nice evening and take care. Bye bye.